Tenth meeting of the Thousand Oaks City Council. Can I please have you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Can I have the city clerk please do the roll call?
Councilmember Glancy.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña is absent this evening. Mayor Irwin.
Here. Item four, request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. There are none. I just want to let all the speakers this evening know that the lights on the... our voting lights do not work this evening and your timing lights will not be working either. But the clock works, so just keep an eye on the clock. You're just not going to get any warning. And now we have our special presentations and announcements, and I will be up at the podium. On February 11th, the Canejo Open Space Conservation Agency, COSCA, celebrated the completion of a 145-foot Canejo Canyon's bridge. When opened, the bridge connected Wildwood Park to the Canejo Canyon's open space in Western Plateau. Through the joint efforts of COSCA, the city, CRPD, and Canejo Open Space Foundation, as well as numerous generous individuals, this project was made possible. Our public work staff also played a key role in making this happen. Because of the successful partnership, this project was chosen as the 2001 Project of the Year. I would like to introduce Joe Deacon, president of the American Public Works Association, who will tell us more.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Joe Deacon. I'm the chapter president for the Ventura County chapter of the American Public Works Association, and it is my distinct pleasure to be here tonight to recognize you for your success in putting together the Arroyo Canejo Pedestrian Bridge project. This bridge...this project was submitted to our group by project manager Dean Morales, and we recently got a presentation from him and Diana Lockyer on the project. And the partnership was one aspect that we really thought was noteworthy, the city, COSCA, and the park district. And the story behind it of the idea that you got a call saying, "Do you want to buy a bridge?" And someone actually thought, "Yes, maybe we do." And you took advantage of that, and your city was nimble enough and creative enough to figure out a way to do it with...within all the requirements that a city has to work within. I applaud you personally and as a representative of the APWA chapter of Ventura County on your achievement in building the Arroyo Canejo Bridge. Congratulations. And I have applause.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Jay's a past president of our chapter as well. It was nice to stand up here. Thank you, Mayor.
And I would urge all our residents to go over and see the bridge. It really opens up a beautiful area for hiking. Our next special presentation celebrates an annual city event attended by over 5,000 people each year. This year, on April 28th, we are hosting the 15th anniversary of the City of Thousand Oaks Earth Arbor Day. This is a great event for the entire family. I would like to introduce Jana Covell, chair of the Arbor Earth Day Committee, to tell us more about what will be happening.
Hi, Rachel. Come join me. I'm joined tonight by Rachel Wagner. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. We...just up toward the camera. Yeah. Rachel's holding our great new Arbor Day poster this year, and we want to invite everybody out on April 28th at Canejo Creek Park from 11:00 to 4:00. We have a wonderful event. This is our 15th year. We have over 100 green vendors and exhibitors for people to come to and visit, learn more tips for learning to recycle and so forth at their homes. It's free. We have free shuttle service, free parking, and if you ride your bikes and participate in the bike rodeo that'll be there, the Glen Garvin Bike Rodeo, we have free bicycle valet parking, so you can leave your bike in a safe area and enjoy the rest of the festival, which includes wild animals, a full lineup of entertainment, the Mobile Marine Lab, alternative fuel vehicles, trees and plants to give away, art projects for kids out of recycled materials, the public works booth. You can make an eco pledge for your family of how you're going to go green at your house in the coming year. We want to thank our sponsors, the Canejo Recreation Park District, besides the City of Thousand Oaks, Ventura County Star, Waste Management, Whole Foods, Home Depot, MV Transportation, Agribin, 92.7, and KCLU. And we couldn't do this without the city council's support, so thank you very much. And the committee, I've got to name them because there's so many, Gay Monster, John Brooks, Ryan Manuel, Bob Funfar, Chris Dansbury, Elena Keenan, Rachel, who's here with the poster, Jeannie Norman, Steve Schultz, Pat Smith, Mike Hauser, Rick Gessler, Sergeant Eric Hatley, and Bob Brodessen from CRPD. So thank you all, and we hope to see you all at Canejo Creek Park on April 28th for Arbor Earth Day, and you can go to the city's website for all the details. Thank you.
Turn that poster around and show the audience. I only had the back view. Jana and her crew do an excellent job every year. We appreciate all your efforts. And are we getting a picture? Do you want to invite any other committee members up? So we have this proclamation in honor of Arbor Earth Day.
Thank you so much.
I want to see you there. Yes, I will be there. And our next presentation proclaims April 8th through 14th as National Library Week 2002. The theme this year is "You Belong at Your Library." As one of our city's greatest assets, our libraries offer excellent programs and opportunities that enrich our youth, adults, and seniors. They provide rich resources for lifelong learning. A primary reason for our library's success is our dedicated staff and our enthusiastic library director. And I would like to introduce the enthusiastic library director. Good evening, Steve. Want to tell us a little bit about what's going on?
Sure. Yeah, I'm Steve Brogdon, the library director, and this is indeed National Library Week. And I'm reminded of a saying, "The more things change, the more things stay the same." I don't remember who said it, but I can tell you where to look it up. National Library Week started in 1958 with the idea that kids weren't spending enough time reading, they were spending too much time watching television, listening to the radio. This was 1958. It sounds an awful lot like what we might hear today. But right now, the library is being used more than ever. Just this last year, we had a 70% increase in our use of databases. Now, the...in the library world, the internet has completely changed the way we work, but we still remain busy, we still remain viable. There are more public libraries in the United States than there are McDonald's. That's an interesting fact. More than 65% of public libraries provide information for job seekers. This is something that I think is pretty critical in today's world. We've got a few events coming up this week that we've arranged for National Library. We had a movie matinee on Monday, Eat, Pray, Love, the film starring Julia Roberts. All these films are free, by the way. All these events are free. Thursday, we have music at the library. We have CLU's conservatory cellists playing from 6:00 to 7:00. On Saturday, we have the Kingsman Shakespeare Company at the library with the condensed version of Twelfth Night. And on Sunday, we have April 15th opera talks on La Boheme. And I just want to thank the council for all their support throughout the years. You and the support you give us are the reasons that we have such a fine library, and it is one of the best in the state, and I've got the numbers to prove it. So, thank you very much, and Mayor Irwin, thank you.
And yes, and I have a proclamation for you. I won't read the whole thing because I know what happens to councilmember Fox when you read a proclamation. But I do want to read the first line, which says, "Libraries have historically served as our nation's great equalizers of knowledge by providing free access to all," and I think that's one of the most important functions, so...
Absolutely.
And then we have a great surprise today again. I would like to introduce Louis Wilkenfeld, our artistic director from Cabrillo Music Theater. Good evening, Louis.
How are you?
And I hope you're here to entertain us this evening.
Not myself. I brought somebody to tell us.
All right, very good.
Thank you. We're very honored to be here once again. I want to let you know that yesterday, we posted our 100th daily video of The Road to 1776. You know about this. I've cornered many of you, and we're going to be asking each one of you at the dais here to make your video in the next couple of months. I'm going to approach you in May through your staff. We've had city leaders, community leaders, members of the Cabrillo Music Theater family, performers from all across the country, each talking about what went on that day in 1776. We started it on January 1st. We're going to continue it to the end of our production of 1776 this fall. It's been a fascinating adventure for us, and by the time we're done, we'll have posted 302 videos. We're very excited about that. I also want to tell you that we announced our new season, and this is what it is. Maybe you've seen our very cool brochure. We're starting, as I mentioned, this fall with 1776. It's a musical about the writing of our Declaration of Independence, and it's very inspirational, and it's very wonderful and human and moving, and coming two weeks before the election of our next president. It will be very needed for us to be reminded of what is great about this nation and the invention of it. We're going to follow that in the winter with your good man Charlie Brown, never been performed in this theater before. Then we're going to do Cabrillo's Never Done Grease. That'll be our show next spring, and so we're excited to bring that to the Cavali Stage for the very first time. And then the Thousand Oaks regional professional premiere of Legally Blonde, the musical. All four shows are new to Cabrillo Music Theater. Three have never been on the stage at either theater in this building before. We're very excited about doing this. As always, all of our shows are local and mounted just for our audiences here in Thousand Oaks. In fact, last night, we started rehearsals, auditions for Me Me in St. Louis, which will be our summer show. And I want to let you know that we were partnering with Food Share. We're going to have a food drive during all performances of Me Me in St. Louis. We're asking our audience members to bring canned goods to give to the hungry, and we're going to make sure that they get there. We're excited to be partnering with Food Share. Me Me in St. Louis, of course, is a show about family and being a good neighbor, and there's nothing more neighborly than taking care of those who need help. I also want to let you know that we are continuing our movie series at Movie Co. Theater, our neighbors down the street, in to get ready for Me Me in St. Louis, a musical based on a classic MGM movie. We're going to show That's Entertainment, which is a compilation film of all the great MGM movies. You'll remember it. It was so popular back in the '70s, they made three sequels. So it's a great movie for us to show, and it'll be on June 18th at Movie Co. Theater, and all those are free. I want to tell you a little bit about Once Upon a Mattress, our upcoming show. It's a story of the princess and the pea. It was originally put on Broadway over 50 years ago, and it was the Broadway debut of Carol Burnett. Our production is a brand-new take on the show. We have, as always, a combination of professional, soon-to-be-professional, future stars, and all come from the community, and it was a result of an audition that took 450 people that we saw for this show. Also, what we like to do once a year, so we put the Cabrillo Music Theater Orchestra onstage. So these folks who are your live musical theater orchestra will be on the stage for our production of Once Upon a Mattress. We run, open next Friday. We go April 20th through the 29th at the Cavali Theater, right next door here, and tickets are on sale at Ticketmaster and at the Civic Arts Plaza box office. We hope that you will attend. Anybody who comes dressed as a prince, or princess, or in pajamas, gets a free gift from Cabrillo. And even though it says it's for kids, anybody can do that. All right? If you dress as a prince, or as a princess, or in real pajamas, not just what you wear to bed, but real pajamas, and you'll get a free gift. And thanks to our friends at the Sleep Shop, we will have 20 mattresses stacked tall in the lobby of the Cavali Theater for people to admire, so it should be a lot of fun. I promised you some entertainment. I brought actual theater royalty. Betsy Malone has starred in two previous shows for Cabrillo Music Theater. She has starred in Ragtime several years ago, and then last year, as one of the marvelous wondourettes, a role that she originated in Los Angeles and in New York. It is a real pleasure to have her leading our cast on this show, and she's going to be singing a song from the show that talks about the Princess Winifred, the character she plays, and how she stacks up to some of the other princesses in all of the fairy tales of the past. I'm going to ask that after the song, Jackie, we'd love to get a photo of you with the princess. So should she come around back to you, or is that not kosher? Great, so we'll bring her back around, and Mary, hopefully, will take a photo. And anyway, please enjoy Betsy Malone, accompanied on the piano by Chris Kimbler, in a song that's called Happily Ever After.
(Singing) They all live happily, happily, happily ever after. The couple is happily leaving the chapel eternally tied. When the curtain descends, there is nothing but laughing and laughter. When the fairy tale ends, the heroine's always a bride. Ella, the girl of the cinders, did the wash and the walls and the winters, but she landed a prince who was ronny and blue-eyed and blonde. Till I honestly doubt that she could ever have done it without that crazy lady. With the wand, Cinderella had outside help. I have no one but me. Fairy godmother, 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 where can you be? I haven't even got a godmother. I haven't even got a godmother. I've got a mother, a plain, ordinary woman. Snow White was so pretty. They tell us that the queen was insulted and jealous. When the mirror declared that Snow White was the fairest of all. She was dumped on the border, but was saved by some men who adored her. Now I grant you, they were small, but there were seven of them, practically a regiment. I'm alone in the night, by myself, not a dwarf, not an elf, not a doll in sight. That girl had seven determined little men, working day and night just for her. True, the queen did give her a poisoned apple. Even so, she lived happily, happily, happily ever after. A magical kiss counteracted the apple eventually. Now I know I'm not clever. I'll do what they tell me I have to. I want some happily ever after to happen to me. Winifred, maid of the mire, has but one simple human desire. Oh, I wish for no more than two shoes on the floor next to mine. Someone to fly and to float with, to swim through the marsh and to mow with. As for this one, he'd be fine. And I'm burning to bring it about. If I don't, I'll be stuck with goodbye and good luck and get out. But I don't want to get out. I want to get into some happily, happily ever after. I want to walk happily out of the chapel eternally tied. For I know that I'll never live happily ever after, till after I'm a bride. And then I'll be happily happy, yeah, happily happy.
How often do you get a photo with a princess?
Um, never.
Thank you all very much. We'll see you at the show.
Thank you.
All sorts of great things going on in Thousand Oaks. All right, now is the time for public comments. Can I please have the city clerk announce?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on the subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the city council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Twelve people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Our first speaker is my friend Clara. You are up. And Clara is a Holocaust survivor. She's going to be telling us about the National Days of Remembrance.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, the mayor of the city, council members, to help me, to fulfill my mission as long as I live, to never forget, to never let happen again, the most, the worst genocide of mankind. The United States Holocaust Memorial Museum sent me a letter like last year. Clara, there is a national memorial of the remembrance days of Holocaust. What do you do in Thousand Oaks about this? Last year, I was here, and I will be ever, ever, as long as I live, to remind you not only the horrors that we went through, but to never happen again, and also, I will definitely concentrate for those people who were Germans, Nazis, Christians, and helped us somewhat to facilitate our life. I owe my survival to one of them. We cannot forget those people. I just tell you a couple of things that always I will remember. Remember, when I was born in Transylvania? I'm not Dracula's niece, but I was born in Transylvania and lived in Romania till I was 13 years old, when Transylvania was given to the Hungarians, who were allies to Hitler. And with that, they took all the government, took all the laws of the Germans, of the Nazi government, to persecute the Jews and to take us, to bring us in concentration camps, working camps, and extermination camps. I was 13 that time, and my whole family, 39 members of my family, was deported, taken to Auschwitz, which was a concentration and an extermination camp. After 39 members of my family, my mom and I survived by sheer luck and by help of some people who were not Jewish, but they helped us to survive. When I came back from concentration camp after 11 months, I found an empty house, but a lot of people who were my friends helped me to begin my schooling with a new dress or something that I will never forget. That's for me.
Why don't you keep going and then tell us a little bit about the events that are going to be held in Thousand Oaks for National Day of Remembrance?
Yeah. And this time, as I said, I went back to communist country, and for 17 years, I was there studying, and they didn't let us go anywhere else. Finally, in 1962, we were taken to France, where I had some relatives, and sent me a visa, and ended up in the United States. In the United States, finally, I spoke about my Holocaust experiences, being a French teacher in Eastchester, New York State. I was exposed to students, and I wanted to instill them to fight against prejudice, against injustice, and they should stand up. Don't be a bystander, be an upstander. As long as I will live, I will teach this. I wrote this because my mother died at the age of 101, instilled on me. Clara, write down whatever happened to us. People will learn from it. We know that it's still going on, denial against...about the Holocaust, there is still going on a fight in Darfur, in Egypt, they are killing Christians. We don't, we can't let this happen again. It is enough, and that's what I teach here. And in Thousand Oaks, I will never stop. I started colleges, schools, whoever invites me. I tell details of my book. If not, they can buy it. I'm still here, my mother's voice. Please help me to continue my work. Thank you very much.
And Clara, aren't there some special events that are planned this week?
This week, I speak...I have eight presentations left. In CLU, I will speak on the 18th at 10 o'clock, in Calabasas, and in Riverside Colleges.
All right, and we will, if you can get that information to Mary, we'll put it on the website to make sure that people can know where they can hear you.
And I wish to come also. I will tell more about my past.
Well, thank you very much for coming, and we do have a proclamation for you.
I have it here.
Oh, you got it already.
Yeah.
And I hope people can listen to you speak because there are a lot of very important lessons that you are teaching us, Clara.
The lessons of Holocaust, the state. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Dr. Richard Elsley.
My name is Dr. Richard Elsley. I am a resident of Thousand Oaks. Mayor Irwin, council members, councilmember Price, it is my pleasure to be here once again to tell you about a talk coming up in the Discovery Center's Science Speaker Series. Purpose of these Science Speaker Series talks is to bring in scientists who are working on interesting and important subjects and who can describe what they're doing in a way that anybody can understand and enjoy. Next talk is Thursday, two days from now. Giacomo Chiari, the chief scientist of the Getty Conservation Institute, will talk on using science to discover and preserve cultural heritage. The Getty has used all manner of modern scientific equipment, including things that they've designed themselves based on tools that NASA has used for space exploration, for example, to look inside and underneath historical artifacts, find paintings that were buried by another artist painting over them, find a mummified bird inside a mummified Egyptian, and to preserve these historical artifacts, preserving some of the paintings on the walls in the Egyptian tombs, and preserving early Disney cartoons. So he will talk about all of these kinds of applications of science that they have done. Talk will be Thursday, April 12th, at 7:30 p.m., 7:30 to 9:00 p.m., at the Baxter Healthcare Building on Lakeview Canyon, just south of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. It costs $15 for adults, $10 for students, teachers, and senior citizens. And if you want more information, go to our website, which is sciencesspeakerseries.org. Any questions?
How was the last talk?
The last talk was very good. We had over 150 people attend. Dr. Susan Love talking about breast cancer and some of the new ways of looking at how the disease actually works, so it was very interesting.
Very good. Well, you guys always do a great job. Thank you, Dr. Elsley.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Howard Beerman, and he will be followed by... Our next speaker is Howard Bierman, and he will be followed by Mark Walters.
I'm Howard Bierman, a resident of Thousand Oaks. I, we are back to ask you to pass a resolution that supports an amendment to the Constitution that states corporations are not people and money is not speech. Why are we requesting the city council to pass a resolution that appears to be a national issue and maybe even a partisan one? It is not a partisan one. If a Democrat, a Republican, an independent, or a person of any political affiliation would rather have their voted, their elected representatives to be responsible to the voters' needs rather than to the needs of corporations or unions, then the issue is not partisan. When the amendment is passed, the political parties will continue to debate the issues before them based on their own political beliefs without pressures from the corporations and unions. With concern to the city's budget and appreciating the busy plate of the council, based on the minutes of many cities that have passed similar resolutions, there is no monetary cost to the city, and I would assume minimum time for the city attorney to review and the council to vote on the resolution. It is a local issue as well as national, as you can see by the people that have come here tonight, and I would like to ask the people who support this resolution to please stand. We voters and others who support the resolution, who cannot come tonight, await your vote. And I would like to add that if you vote against, I would like to know the reason why, that you're voting against or declining to enter, to entertain the resolution. Thank you.
Mark Walters, followed by Elaine Herzog.
Good evening, distinguished members of the council. I'll try not to be repetitive, and I will be short. My name is Mark Walters, and I've made my home in Thousand Oaks for almost 14 years. I'm also here to talk about the U.S. Supreme Court's Citizen United decision. The Supreme Court judges ruled this as free speech. Again, I'm asking the council to take a stand against this ruling. Is candidacy for public office just for those who can afford it or are willing to accept corporate contributions? Corporate financing can have a huge impact on election outcomes with their ability to flood the airwaves with television ads and mass mailings. This results in drowning out those without the financial resources to respond to what are often half-truths and false claims. This problem is not limited to the legislative branch. Justice is now for sale. California selects its judges through elections so corporations can threaten to support one candidate over another. What judge or city council member would stand up against a corporation with unlimited funds and the legal right to give them to whomever they wish? Let's face it, nobody spends money without expecting to get something in return. Corporations can also be controlled by citizens of other countries. Why should we let foreign interests wield this power over our elections? So I ask the city council to join over 200 cities, counties, and civic organizations like the U.S. Conference of Mayors and National League of Cities in adopting a resolution in support of a constitutional amendment to overturn this ruling. Thank you.
Elaine Herzog, followed by Kate Pearl.
Council members, I'm Elaine Herzog, and I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for approximately 45 years. In that period of time, I've seen a number of positive changes in the city, but one more additional positive change would be for Thousand Oaks to go on record as being against corporations as people. Even though I know that as a suburb of Los Angeles, we may not be as influential on the national level as LA and New York, et cetera, and other major cities that have taken a stand against corporations as people. However, it would certainly put Thousand Oaks in good company with the other important players in this very serious decision. In closing, I'd like to quote from former President Franklin Roosevelt, who said, "The liberty of a democracy is not safe if the people tolerate the growth of a private power to the point where it becomes stronger than their democratic state itself." That, in essence, is fascism. And also from present Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, who said recently, "Judges created corporations as persons, gave birth to corporations as persons. There could be an argument made that that was the court's error to start with, imbuing a creature of state law with human characteristics." Please consider these two important quotes when making your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Herzog. Kate Pearl, followed by Douglas Johannes.
Hi, my name is Kate Pearl. I live in Newbury Park, and I would like to point out that I know we focus on Citizens United a lot, but our electoral system was in a lot of trouble even before Citizens United, which just complicated things. There are record amounts of money being poured into candidates' treasuries. Public elections are controlled by privately-held corporations, so elected officials are controlled by corporations, and they don't represent the people at all. And it really doesn't matter what the Supreme Court decides when it comes to Montana and campaign-financed laws, because our democracy was already broken before Citizens United. So Citizens United helped shine a spotlight on the problem, but undoing the ruling wouldn't be enough to fix the problem. So I'm strongly urging you to adopt a resolution saying corporations are not people, they are not entitled to constitutional rights, money is not speech, and basically just ending corporate personhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Johannes, followed by Glenn Kimball.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Doug Johannes, long-term resident of Ventura, and here again asking you to please pass a resolution calling for a constitutional amendment stating that corporations are not people, money is not speech. I'd like to share some experiences I've had. I've been canvassing with a petition for this, and it is very popular, as long as you can get somebody to stop and listen to what you're talking about, which is kind of hard to do, but if they stop and listen to it, and you mention money and politics, they'll say, "Yeah, I'll sign that, sure, of course, this is obvious." Especially when you explain to them, "Citizens United," you get a lot of blank stares, actually. There's a lot of apathy and a lot of ignorance out there, but if you explain it in terms of money and politics, buying our Congress, buying our presidents, buying our Supreme Courts, they'll agree with all that, and they will sign it. Of course, it's very time-consuming going out and canvassing, but it's worthwhile, and there is a lot of apathy and ignorance out there, and part of the reason for the apathy is people don't feel they have a voice in government. And corporate money and politics is a large reason why people don't feel they have a voice in government. We should be doing everything we can to engage people and get them involved in the political process to vote, learn, watch the news, read the news, become involved in politics, take a stand for whatever issues you believe in, but why would anybody want to do, take all the time to do all that if they have no vote? Freedom of speech, my voice has no power compared to the voice of Exxon, or Monsanto, Halliburton, et cetera. I'd like, at this point, we asked before for all the supporters of this resolution to stand. I'd like to ask if anybody's opposed to this resolution, if they could please wave or stand or anything like that. I don't find a lot of people against it. Also, we are building a grassroots movement to restore democracy to this country, and that's another reason why we're asking city councils instead of our Congress, because they've already been bought off, and we're asking them to cut off their own funding sources, so we don't trust them, so we're starting on the ground and starting at city governments. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Kimball, followed by Raul Gutierrez.
My name is Glenn Kimball. I've lived in California for almost six years. There's only so many different ways we can say corporations should not be considered people. There's only so many ways we can say that money is not free speech. It is our duty as citizens of the United States to reclaim our government from the grips of big businesses and restore democracy for the people and by the people. And this is an issue that may seem to be happening far away from our homes, but in truth, it affects every one of us. So tonight, I ask the council, once again, to pass a resolution supporting constitutional amendment abolishing corporate personhood and saying that money is not free speech. And also, I'd like to mention for those in the audience and for anyone watching at home, that about the May 1st general strike, no work, no school, no spending, no banking, find out more at OccupyMayFirst.org, first spelled number 1-S-T. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Mr. Gutierrez, and he will be followed by Nick Kidway.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin and council members, and especially Mr. Price for his first meeting, really, and all the staff. I was reading the paper about a couple months ago, and some gentleman from Westlake made an opinion about what the council is composed of. In other words, he tried to insinuate that it's a divided council, and he gave the initials on that proposition some of the council people take, BIF, meaning business interest first, versus RIF, residents' interest first. I see Andy smiling, and I have to smile too, because, but I've seen that thought promoted constantly at this microphone, that the council is divided and only certain people take the interest, the residents at heart, and the others are just business, you know, business interest first, when in reality, every one of the council members in here, all throughout the whole time that the council's existed since the city started, have been residents' interest first. Otherwise, it wouldn't even be there. But the part that this gentleman failed to expand on is that it takes something different to comply with the demands of the residents, comply with the needs of the residents. It costs money, and where does the money come from? When he gives me that solution, then I'll agree with him. And I think that's the first and most important decision that all of you make in here whenever you have anything come up before the council, is how are we going to pay for this? Look at item 10 and 11 on today's agenda, or today's newspaper that is talking about how the state is kind of, anyhow, we're worried about money, very much worried about money, and where does the money come from? Well, that's the first and foremost duty that the council members have, and I'm sure they honor that, with a few that seem to think that there's a rift somewhere. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Mr. Kidway, followed by Steve Gibran or Gibson.
I beg in the name of God who's most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbal-Kidway. I'm resident of Newbury Park, and last time I checked, Dr. Glancy, still director concerned at Citizens of Thousand Oaks, don't have as many members like the people over here. That would be just a dream, I guess. Honorable mayor, sure would love to have the support of other citizens. It's great to talk about federal issues and the Supreme Court, but all politics is local, and if you think locally and act globally, I think you're doing the right thing. It's a shame that we are, I'm looking at two appointed council members out of four that are here, and this is not a seat that could be appointed, and that was no interest of the people. The city attorney, the city clerk gave a report of about 70 cities for comparison, but it was a shame. Cities were like Fort Bragg, I don't even know that it was a city, Atwater, cities with 3,000, 5,000 population, budgets of $2 million, $1 million, instead of $200 million. We're talking big money here. And so I went to school in Fullerton, and my friend is a council member there. It cost him $13,000. And in this city, if you don't have $100,000, you can forget it. You're not a credible candidate. The odds of selecting the council member, if TOTV will show, it's a scientific fact, the odds of selecting him out of 17 people were 3,362. You can come up with a different number, but it would be close to that, 3,000. So the system was rigged, rigged, pure and simple. The odds of people not getting any legitimate question asked or being on the top three was 1 in 353. Again, scientifically proven, it's rigged, so maybe some of you will file with the DA, this should not be allowed, this should not be allowed. TOTV, if you can show the little man. This is what we have got going here. I mean, we have a dictatorship. I mean, we don't really have rights. I mean, a planning commissioner is having a right-to-vote petition going around getting signatures in 2012 in Thousand Oaks. It's just absolutely disgusting. Yesterday, I was here for the planning commission. You look at that beautiful flag today, there was no flag even. They don't really care about the flags or about the Constitution. They care about the money. The special interests have taken over the city, and you folks should be involved. Come back in the next meeting, don't let up. Don't let them get away with it.
Gibbene.
Oh, okay.
My name is Steve Gibbene, and I live in Newbury Park. I'm here to speak tonight to all of you, good evening, about UN's Agenda 21. Sustainable development was created and defined by the United Nations in 1987, and the action plan to implement it was signed on to in 1992 by George H.W. Bush and 178 other nations. It was called Agenda 21, the Agenda for the 21st Century. Considered unsustainable, now listen closely, everyone, because this all affects you, considered unsustainable under this plan, middle-class lifestyle, single-family homes, private vehicles, meat-eating, air conditioning, appliances, dams, and tillage. UN Agenda 21, Sustainable Development, is an action plan that is used to inventory and control all resources, land, minerals, and water, all animals, all human beings, and all means of production in the world. Clinton began to implement it in the U.S. in 1993 by giving the American Planning Association a multimillion-dollar grant to write a land-use legislative blueprint for every municipality in the U.S. It is called Growing Smart Legislative Guidebook with model statutes for planning and management of change. This was completed in 2002 and is being used to train planners in every university, college, and government planning office in the nation. Growing Smart is smart growth, has a wonderful name to it, doesn't it? Growing Smart is in this planning department, and its principles are in our comprehensive plan right now. Besides this, on that same shelf, you will find the local Agenda 21 Planning Guide put out by ICLE and the United Nations. Urban areas are being consolidated and rural areas are being emptied of people through restrictive land-use policies, gasoline costs, vehicle miles travel tax, loss of rural road maintenance, closures of rural schools, closure of rural post offices, well monitoring, and regionalization. regionalization pressures. The comprehensive plan now under construction incorporates UN Agenda 21 Sustainable Development mandates in all of its elements. For more information, please see PostSustainabilityInstitute.org. This is not a partisan issue, it's an American issue, and it is of concern to all Americans. I would like the TV to now show what I've put on display. It is a map of the United States. The red areas considered under UN Agenda 21 are off-limits to all human use. The yellow areas are of limited human use. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Louis Thayer, Lucas Thayer.
Hi, guys, how you doing? A bunch of beautiful people we have here. I'm so glad that these humans are here. And you all, people, are so wonderful for being here. Thank you for being people. I appreciate that you're being people. People are not corporations. Corporations are not people. A corporation is a group of people, and a corporation can collect a whole lot of money. And when a corporation is a person, it can donate money to a political campaign which influences it beyond the capacity of a normal people. That's not okay. It's not okay for democracy to be for sale, and it's not okay for us, the people, to not have access to it anymore. We need campaign finance reform, and you need to pass the resolution rejecting corporate personhood, stating that corporations are not people and money is not speech, and send that resolution off to the U.S. Congress right away. And the city of Ojai has already done this. They're the first city in Ventura County to pass the resolution rejecting corporate personhood, but that's all right. You're still in second place. If you do it now, you're still the second city in Ventura County to pass the resolution rejecting corporate personhood. We're working on Ventura, we're working on you guys, we're working on all the different cities, and also the county board of supervisors as well. We have two out of five interested in the resolution rejecting corporate personhood. So we're working on it, and please work on it with us. This is really important, and you can be historically viewed as the city that was second in Ventura County to pass the resolution rejecting corporate personhood, or you can be third, or fourth, or fifth. But you have time now to still do it. So do it. It's the right thing to do. Freedom of speech is for the people, not for the corporations. Also, sleep is a human right. Everybody sleeps, and some people sleep outside. So you need to make a law stating that it's not illegal to sleep outside. Public space is a human right. It belongs to everybody. It needs to be made available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for all legal activities, including sleep. I'd like to also remind you that there is a May 1st global general strike and boycott, so make sure not to go to work on May 1st. I'd like the city of, what city are we in? Thousand Oaks, thanks. I usually go to Ojai on Tuesdays. Thousand Oaks needs to give all of its employees the day off, except for emergency employees, so that we can stand in solidarity with International Workers' Day and give these people the opportunity to have the day off. We fought for the weekend, we fought for the eight-hour workday. We're going to fight for May 1st to have the day off then. Water is a human right. Water needs to be made available in all spaces and 24 hours a day. Bathroom access is a human right. Shower access is a human right. People need to be able to have a shower or go to the bathroom, and it needs to be open 24 hours a day. Some people live outside. It's a reality, and it needs to be addressed. Food is a human right. Public space should grow food. If there's a blade of grass growing on the lawn out there, it's a waste of space, and we could be growing tomatoes, or strawberries, or blueberries, or blackberries instead, and feed the public for free. Medical care is a human right. My mother has cancer, and she's going to die of cancer because we can afford the treatment. And that is murder. That is society murdering my mother because we don't have enough money. And all people need to have all rights equally respected, and that needs to begin on the local level.
All right, and we also have three statement cards, four statement cards, in favor of the resolution in support of the amendment to the U.S. Constitution. We have had you coming in for a number of weeks, and I would like to see if, somebody mentioned that the National League of Cities is supporting this and the Conference of Mayors. I'd like to see what other cities are doing, because certainly we're in Thousand Oaks very in favor of things like transparency, and we do have campaign finance laws here in Thousand Oaks. So this is a national issue, and we generally don't want to go in that direction. But I think maybe if the city manager could look at what other people are doing and then report back to us, that would be helpful. All right. Any other comments? Consent calendar? Dr. Glancy?
I move approval for consent calendar.
Well, we haven't pulled anything yet. Did you want to pull something? Did you want to pull, yes. Mr. Price?
If I may, I'd like to pull D.
All right, item D. And we have...
Can I move the balance of the consent calendar?
Well, we have speakers still.
Oh, okay.
For the consent calendar. We have five speakers, and our first speaker is Dawn Hurwig.
Good evening. What I'm going to speak on is smart meters. And I first became aware of the smart meter back in October 2011, when I read the article in the Ventura County Star entitled "Utility to Hold Forum on Smart Meetings." My neighbor and I attended this forum on the 27th of October with, I'd guess, about 100 other people. The content consisted pretty much of assurances that there was absolutely no harm, no ill effects, very small amount of RF exposure equivalent to what a cell phone and/or microwave might admit. I came to learn, but it left me with more questions than I heard answers to. I discovered that Santa Barbara, among 50 other cities and counties, had opted out of smart meter installation by Southern California Edison. Some even banned them. Got me wondering several things. One, what is specifically so wrong or bad about these meters that counties and cities would opt out and/or ban them from being installed? Two, what Thousand Oaks and our elected leaders thought about these smart meters? And three, what our county supervisors thought? So I wrote letters to the county supervisors, and I called the city. At the time I called, it was advised that this was considered a non-issue by the city of Thousand Oaks, and that it was not going to be addressed by city council. Well, that didn't exactly sit right with me. I had questions, I needed answers, and I wanted to make my own decisions regarding something that I had come to learn was not healthy for us, would in the end cost us more money, would invade our privacy, and we'd continually be wired to those who have a need to know, to quote my husband, "What time we get up and put on the light to go potty?" My cohort, Brenda and I, both active HOA board members, got on our Sunset Hills bandwagon, and me on my Neighborhood Watch chair pedestal, along with my Neighborhood Watch captains, provided information and websites, and encouraged our Sunset Hills residents to write to each of you if they felt they didn't want these smart meters. I know you've taken time to do your own due diligence. We sent you references for information, and you probably did some preparation in advance of that. The Sage Report is a really in-depth and good report for specifics regarding distances and amounts and that kind of thing. A recent article in the Star said that the supervisors, Ventura County supervisors, have already sent the CPUC a letter requesting that we residents of Thousand Oaks, I mean Ventura County, excuse me, be allowed to opt out of the installation with no penalties and no monthly fees. The CPUC will be voting on this issue on April 19th. This brings me to tonight. I, like most, do not like other entities making decisions for me, our families, and especially our health, our privacy, and the money we are trying to live on in budget. I'd like to thank you for making this an agenda item, for by doing so, you're saying to each of us, you're representing we residents seriously, and are interested in our concerns, and will always act in our behalf. In closing, I'm asking that you vote based on what you've heard here tonight, based on what people have said, are there issues and concerns in their letters and emails to you, and based on your own research and findings. And if the most you can do for us is to send a letter, then please send a forceful letter to the CPUC allowing us to opt out of the smart meters, power down wireless meters...
We're going to have to wrap this up.
...and repeater installations, without penalties and without fees. Thank you.
Thank you. And I actually went out of order, so Mr. Price?
Thank you.
Item D.
7D. I just had one question of staff in regards to the additional appropriation, and it deals with the enforceable obligation schedule, and I know that that's something that hasn't yet been resolved. But I also recognize that this is a project that's been underway for some time now, and something that we need to continue to advance. So I was just trying to reconcile that in my mind, and maybe you can give me some pearls of wisdom that'll allow me to do that.
Certainly, Councilmember Price. This item is for approval of an amendment to the engineering contract so that we can continue with some final design changes to put the project out to bid. And this is to change the plans to address some value engineering that had been done over the last year to several months, which has the potential to save 3/4 of a million dollars on the construction costs. So we feel this is a very, very worthwhile effort to do. And at this time, because of how the contract or the agreement was structured last year to secure this funding, this is redevelopment money, the Department of Finance has given us the indication that this funding is in fact secure, and that because of that agreement. That agreement, at this time, doesn't provide for money to be used for additional design work. So, again, to keep the project moving forward, we're asking for the appropriation from gas tax funds, which is certainly an eligible use of that for street improvement work. I would note that the Autumn Mall Association will be paying for half of this additional design cost per our agreement with them for the design phase. We believe that this funding, or this money, is reimbursable through additional discussions with the Oversight Committee once that's put in place. So we'll be definitely bringing that up to them at the appropriate time.
Thank you. I think that answers my question and concern.
I actually had questions along the same line, because gas tax money is in very, very short supply, and I wouldn't want to see, this is supposed to be RDA money, so when I heard earlier that there is no way to get that money, or it would be difficult to get it repaid with redevelopment money, I really hope that we can go to the board and tell them that, I mean, what are our options? Can we make this alone, or...
Well, I'm not sure that we can make it alone, per se, but, again, staff will have every, has every intention to take this up with the Oversight Board when it convenes, and we'll work that out as best we can.
I can't see going down the road, if it takes, if it, you know, before we get approval of our enforceable obligation list, to take any more money out of gas tax to pay something that should be paid for with redevelopment money. So hopefully, this is a one-time deal, and it's just to move the project forward, but I can't see approving that again. Thank you. All right, we are going, I'm sorry, speakers, that we had that little discussion right in the middle. Our next speaker is Brenda J. Brenda here? That was, okay. All right. Fran Austin?
Hi, my name is Fran Austin. I live in Westlake Village, and I'm actually shocked to be here, to have this discussion with you, for several reasons. First of all, it is the 11th hour regarding the issue of smart meters, and it looks like there's a theme to this meeting, and it includes using the word "smart" to encourage stupidity, including Agenda 21, government and corporate backscratching, government being the fox to guard its own henhouse and encroach upon the people's freedom. Now, Ray, the issue of smart meters, there is enough information, evidence, and scientific data to sink a ship regarding the fact that these are a danger to humans, to animals, and even to the very trees you may choose to celebrate come Armor Day. These include such things as, and these I must read, pathological leak of blood-brain barrier, neurological symptoms, cardiac and cancer risks, impairment of DNA repair, human stem cells. It's just the beginning. My question is, why would you be discussing this at all, much less at this late date, when it is your duty to protect human health and protect us from anything that can potentially harm us? Even the word "potential" is unnecessary. Now, aside from all this information that comes from Harvard, to Santa Cruz, to Sweden, I have personal experience with the effects of electromagnetic or radioactive, whatever it is, microwave radiation. I have two cousins, who were my only cousins in my aunt's only family, who developed brain tumors. They were otherwise healthy, but they were living in, under electromagnetic wires. And this is of grave concern to me. One is dead, the other, they were able to operate, so he just lost his job as an air traffic controller. This situation is serious, and you have a duty. May I read your mission statement, please? You know? Extraordinary service to the citizens we serve is our purpose and product. That includes the immediate cessation of entertaining any ideas whatsoever of allowing this kind of harm to come to people. Now, I myself spoke with Rudy Gonzalez's office a couple of months ago, and of course, I got the usual bureaucratic gibberish and double-talk, and, oh yeah, attitude that I deserve to be reduced to serfdom regarding my own health, welfare, free will, et cetera. I also called...
Ms. Austin, you're going to have to wrap it up, your time's up.
Okay, I also called the PUC, and was met with the usual voicemail and no-return phone calls. So again, I encourage you to do your duty and serve the people you are sworn to protect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Mr. Kidway is our next speaker.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, director concerned, citizen of Thousand Oaks. Honorable mayor, I come as a humanoid, cannot even pronounce, it's a new word for me, although an upset human at that. I would love the TO TV to show your minutes, which are the draft minutes, right now. I mean, it's just horrible. I hope people can watch the hearing from yesterday also. I mean, people are talking about democracy and human rights and all that, and I showed you the picture of this little man. You like it, Mr. Fox? Hero here. I mean, the building blocks of democracy are not there. That's what happens. I mean, what is happening in Syria right now. I mean, it doesn't happen overnight. It's generally slow unless it's a revolution. And the city clerk and the city won't even follow the rules that were laid down by our forefathers in this city. You are supposed to give a detail on not, you know, 20 pages, but one line or two lines as to what happened. I'll show you more. This is the three speakers that spoke about the illegal appointment process. When it's a report, the city does not even give the pro or con position, just the name. I mean, so how will historians or people know what were these people saying? I mean, so how will historians or people know what were these people saying? This is the 17 candidates that came before you. All that you have done is printed the name. I mean, people, I mean, I hope some of these people are watching who were the applicants, that this is how they are treated. Not even two sentences as to what they spent 15 minutes talking about over here. And then, to top it all, even the council people are censored, because all you have, and I'll show you. TO TV, please show that. All you have is the motion. The discussion, which was enlightening, I mean, it was interesting, Mr. Fox challenging Mr. Adams. It's all not shown. I mean, so people will never know what went on over here. And this, I mean, this is a policy issue. I mean, that's what I ask, I mean, people, I mean, Claudia is not over here. Some council members should ask the clerk and the city manager as to why our city is going down this destructive path. On other issues, I'm glad that you are reducing the expenditures on the change order for the change. So, that is good. I also appreciate, even though I don't know if the people understood, but the mayor is sending a letter about the smart meters. So, those are good motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. So, we have two pro -- two statement cards. And it says, I think both of them are in favor of the letter to the PUC. And finally, we have Mr. Gonzalez, who is available for questions. Does any council person have a question for Mr. Gonzalez? No. Ledger of the council.
I'd move the consent counter.
Vote, please.
The motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Bill de la Penya absent. And the ordinance title 47M is an ordinance amending Sections 1 and 2 of the municipal code Title IX, Appendix A, Specific Plan Number 15, Rancho Caneo Industrial Park, to allow inclusion of certain property, 801, 817, 833, and 849 Mitchell Road, within boundaries of specific plan 2011-70366.
Our next item is a public hearing, item 8A. And can either city clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 8A, Fiscal Year 2012/13 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this hearing. All documents for the City Council and record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We have one person who has presented a card, and that speaker will be allowed five minutes.
All right. Ms. Milton is going to give the report.
Good evening, mayor and council. The city annually receives entitlement funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, called the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG program. The city is required to annually hold a public hearing to solicit comments from all interested parties on the city's plan to spend the federal CDBG funding during the coming fiscal year beginning July 1. For the fiscal year 2012 to 2013, the city will receive $567,950 in CDBG funds, and the city plans to spend that funding, as shown in the chart on Page 2 of the staff report, as follows. $264,988 in 2012 CDBG funds would be combined with prior-year funding totaling $870,633 for a total budget of $1.1 million for the Neighborhood Improvements Program, also known as the Old Town West Streetscape Project. In addition to that, $113,590 will be spent for program administration. $85,192 from the federal funds will be combined with $110,618,000 from the city's Social Services Endowment Fund for a budget totaling $195,810 for social services grants. And those grants will be the subject of a committee report later in this meeting. Going back to the 2012 Community Development Block Grant funding, the city also plans to spend $94,180 for code enforcement at the day labor site and $10,000 for a grant to Women's Economic Ventures to support the Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and the Self-Employment Training Program. All of these programs will primarily benefit lower-income persons and households. The staff is recommending council's approval of the draft action plan totaling $567,950 in new funds plus $886,000 in prior-year funds for a total CDBG 2012/13 budget of $1.4 million. I'd be very happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Questions of staff? All right. We have one speaker on item 8A, and that is Leah Gonzalez.
Good evening, mayor, City Council members, and city staff. My name is Leah Gonzalez, and I am the program manager for Women's Economic Ventures, or WEAVE for short, and I'm a resident of Santa Barbara. WEAVE is a local nonprofit organization and is committed to serving business owners in the Thousand Oaks area and asking for continued CDBG funding to help low- to moderate-income residents create and retain jobs through self-employment in the city of Thousand Oaks. In the past seven years since receiving funding, WEAVE has established itself as a known resource in this community. And as we speak, our self-employment training course is being conducted over at Cal Lutheran University. Since WEAVE began serving Ventura County in 2001, WEAVE has assisted 365 city residents through self-employment training, business consulting, and loan counseling, and helped to start or expand 51 businesses that have created or retained an estimated 76 jobs. WEAVE has also made loans totaling $119,000 to local businesses. In the past five years, WEAVE client businesses across Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties have created and retained an estimated 2,200 jobs and generated an estimated $7.3 million in tax revenues for the state and local economy. CDBG funding is the only money WEAVE has to specifically serve the Thousand Oaks area. And with support in the coming fiscal year, WEAVE plans to use CDBG funds to directly support program expenses and to leverage support from other funders, including the Small Business Administration. WEAVE's goal in the coming fiscal year is to serve a minimum of 15 residents. We would like to thank the city staff of Thousand Oaks for your recommendation of continued funding of $10,000 to ensure our services are available. On behalf of WEAVE and our clients, we thank you, the mayor, City Council members, and city staff, for your consideration for funding this year to help improve and develop economic vitality in your community, one business and one entrepreneur at a time. Unless you have any questions, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Leah. Any questions? Any questions of staff? No. I will close the public hearing. Council discussion. Would someone like to make a motion? Dr. Glancy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a great program. A lot of needy people will get the needed help. I move staff recommendation, points 1 and 2.
All right. Vote, please.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right. Before item 8B, our second public hearing, I think Mr. Price has an announcement to make.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be abstaining from the discussion and any vote, as I was on the Planning Commission when this came before us several short months ago. So, I will sit back.
All right. And Ms. Noonan, that's okay if he stays up on the dais?
Yes. This is not a financial conflict of interest. He's abstaining from voting on and participating in it because of his previous participation. So, he can sit here at the dais in this instance.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Noonan. And can either city clerk please open item 8B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8B, Amendment to Required Parking Standards for Private Commercial Subarea of Civic Arts Plaza, Specific Plan 2011-70570. Applicant is the To Lakes LLC. It's located at 2200 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Two people have presented cards. And pursuant to council standards, the applicant is allowed 15 minutes with a five-minute rebuttal. The remaining speaker will be allowed five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. And Mr. Alawami will be doing the presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Members of the council, I'd like to direct your attention to the monitors for staff's presentation. As mentioned, the request before you tonight is to amend Civic Arts Plaza Specific Plan to revise the parking standards within that plan for the commercial subarea within the The amendment is to match the retail parking standards for retail and restaurants with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan, which is one space for each 300 square feet of retail and one space for each 100 square feet of restaurant use. And here is an aerial map of the Lakes Project. Specific Plan 11, which is Civic Arts Plaza, was adopted in 1989, which established standards for development of the Civic Arts Plaza. And in 2004, the specific plan was amended, which reduced the size of the Lakes Project and required construction of the ponds and ice skating rink, which was approved in conjunction with the approval of the Lakes Project. In 2011, the City Council approved the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan, which contained, again, special development standards, which include the new parking standards that's different from the municipal code. And earlier this year, the City Council and Redevelopment Agency Board approved three amendments to the Lakes agreements, which allowed the conversion of the remaining retail square footage to restaurant uses. And that's subject to the parking requirements. The Planning Commission in February of this year conducted a public hearing and recommended that City Council approve the specific plan amendment. Civic Arts Plaza Specific Plan already allows for shared parking arrangement for the Lakes Project, and that's between the retail and the restaurants. However, if the lake shopping center is converted to 100% restaurants, then the shared parking will not work, because the restaurants will have similar peak hours with each other. So, it doesn't work. So, the proposed amendment before you is to apply the same parking ratios to the Lakes Project as stated in the Thousand Oaks Specific Plan, which are as follows. This is comparison between the Civic Arts Plaza parking, which is based on the municipal code, and Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan parking ratio. For restaurant, it's one space for each 45 square feet of seating area, plus one space for each 35 square feet for bar area, and one space for each 250 square feet of other area. While the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan has one ratio, which is 1 to 100. For the outdoor seating area, currently Civic Arts Plaza and the municipal code is 180 square feet of outdoor seating area, requires no additional parking, and then one space per 45 square feet over that number. Within the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan is 320 square feet with no additional parking, and then one per 100 over the 320. And for the retail, currently is one space for each 250 square feet. The Specific Plan is one for 300 square feet. Those parking standards that were established in the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan applies to new development and also to existing development within the Boulevard area. So, it's reasonable to apply those standards to the Lakes Project, since it's an existing shopping center, and it is surrounded by the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan. If the amendment is approved tonight by the council, the Lakes Project, if it's converted to 100% restaurant, will require 508 parking spaces. And that includes the existing outdoor seating area. There is existing 532 parking spaces at the rear of the site, which will have an additional 24 parkings beyond what the specific, that the new standards will require. The remaining 24 spaces will be used for future outdoor seating area for those restaurants that might be coming at the Lakes. So, and within the Specific Plan itself, Civic Arts Plaza, and with the agreement, there is already an existing shared parking arrangement within the Civic Arts Plaza Specific Plan. Conclusion, staff recommends that the City Council adopt the, introduce the ordinance and approve the amendment, along with Planning Commission recommendation. Thank you.
Do we have questions for Mr. Alawami? Councilmember Fox?
Yeah. Just, Hader, I just want to just briefly summarize. The evaluation of the parking spaces indicates that if the amendment is approved tonight, 508 spaces would be required at the Lakes with 100% restaurant use. The current number of parking spaces is 532. So, the end result is, even with the proposed change, if council approves it, 24 spaces will be above the requirement.
Correct.
All right. And so, there is enough parking, clearly, and then some, to handle whatever parking needs would be generated by any change in use.
Yes, twill.
All right. And again, this is consistent with what we've done with the whole Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan. These exact same requirements apply to the other properties.
Yes.
All right. Very good. Thanks.
All right. Mr. Lamo, the applicant, you have 15 minutes. You don't have to go 15 minutes, though. Certainly, you're right, but...
What an excellent suggestion. Thank you, mayor, council, and city staff. A special thanks to city staff for their guidance and their patience and their explanation. What tonight is really about, more so than anything else, is equity. I am here tonight as a representative for Crusoe affiliated in the Lakes of Thousand Oaks, not as in my capacity with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association. The reason why I raise that is, the irony here is that years ago, the Lakes was touted as the catalyst for development on the Boulevard. And at the very least, the catalyst to get the Boulevard moving in the right direction. And I think from that standpoint, it has been a successful contributor in working towards a specific plan. We have come to find out, because of the sheer size of the lake, or the lakes, or the relative small size of the lakes, that it may actually be more desirable for the Lakes to become tenanted 100% in restaurants someday. In order to do that, causing the equity that exists now all around us on the Boulevard with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan makes good sense. We've, and we've done this comparison before, there is over 200,000, almost 207,000 square feet at the promenade. We have about 1,125 parking spots. Here, we have 50,000 square feet and 532 parking spots. So, parking is not a problem. However, if we ever got into a situation where it was tough, we've always had valet parking, particularly during the holidays. We add that to help with the ice skating rink. And we also have shared parking arrangements, as staff has said. So, what this is really about tonight is being able to take restaurant and commercial use next door and give it the equity that exists now on the Boulevard. And you saw the chart was probably the best explanation in the world. So, I am going to take your advice, and keep it very short, and offer myself for any questions that you might have. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamo. Questions for the applicant? Oh, all right. Then we have one speaker, and that is Mr. Kidway. Then we have one speaker, and that is Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, director concerned citizens of Thousand Oaks, and involved deeply in this project and the projects before that for the last 20 years now, probably. And I'm glad that the appointed council member raised the issue of the enforcement agreements. According to my understanding, and the understanding of the State Department of Finance in Sacramento for our great state, any changes or deviations or anything done after August of 2010 is moot and under ABX 27. But this city just shamelessly just ramblers through, and I guess I have a chance to speak later on about the seven-person committee that is supposed to look after it, but it's being stacked with bureaucrats, so it's only up to the state if they are willing to do it, and there's, you know, 400 agencies, so it may pass muster. But forgetting that for the moment, this truly has so many issues that I wish the people that were here, about corporations or not people, were here. For one thing, just since you're talking about parking, I mean, it's so disgusting to not think about the disabled people and to spend close to $400,000 and to this day fight the person that brought the lawsuit and ignore people like me who raised the issue and forced good citizens and good corporations to have the prime spots in front of them for disabled parking, or they would not get occupancy permits, and to not have a single disabled space. And then to top it, I mean, this argument is made, well, people can come in the back, but you are having a farmer's market there, and the farmer's market is right in the front. I mean, just give me a break. I mean, if you do the right thing, you don't have, that's the thing my mother told me, other people, I say, if you don't tell a lie, you don't have to worry about what you said yesterday or six months ago or six years ago. If you do the right thing, you don't have to worry about it, and it will come to bite you. And for God's sake, you have a new city attorney. I would like an explanation. I've been waiting six weeks now. Why do you redact the financial statements of this developer? He's talking about equity? That is equity? I mean, that should be public records. It is a public record, and it should be available to anybody. Nobody, most people don't care about it, don't want to see it, but to redact it and give a standard, I have the letter from Mr. Hare, Assistant City. He gave a boilerpoint code. It doesn't stand, and I don't want to go to the DA or the grand jury, et cetera, to bring these things out. You should really resolve it over here. I'm glad that Dr. Glancy is looking at me intently. He's a good man, but... And then finally, this issue of the restaurants. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. It's not fair to the business people. I mean, everybody here talks about being pro-business, promoting business, jobs, et cetera. I mean, you read about this grill restaurant in Westlake that closed last Friday, story about it. That's not the complete story. There's another restaurant next to it. I went there just in that area today. Both of them are closed, nice, fine restaurants. The thing that I'm proud of, being from Newberry Park, is that the birth of Baha Fresh was in Newberry Park, and it was on Kimber Drive. And the way I found that restaurant was, I had a night out with the police, and the officer went to dinner with me on Kimber Road at the Baha Fresh and said, "This is a great fresh food," et cetera. And the one on Broadbeck, they moved from there to a better place, it's closed. And so when you trample on the free enterprise system, you are going to destroy it, and that's what you're doing. I mean, if he gets the rent of $1, and I have to bring it up. I mean, the council member says, "Well, you know, he paid the amenities and all that." Sir, the nice things of the Easter Bunny and the movies, it's 1% of the $17 million that the city spent. That's all he's spending, 1%. I mean, how many people would love to have a partnership of getting 99% return on 1%? I mean, it's just criminal. It's very sad. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Hi, staff response. And Mr. Prescott, could you address the, or Mr. Alawami, the handicap parking issue?
Yes, I think Mr. Kidway is referring to the angled parking that was placed in the front of the Lake Shopping Center, and actually, the disabled parking is located in the parking lot at the rear of the center, and it does meet all the code requirements. Those spaces at the rear of the center are closer to the entrance doors of the shops via sidewalks than the angled parking in front, and there are sufficient number of spaces as required by code.
Any other questions of staff? All right. And then we have rebuttal by the applicant. Again, please don't feel that you need to take your entire 15 minutes.
Well, I only have five minutes, but I won't take that either. Again, Rick Lemo, representing Caruso Affiliated and the Lakes. And quite frankly, I want to just cover some very, very quick points, because this seems to happen almost weekly. Mr. Kidway has, yes, he has been deeply involved in this from the very beginning. He has been unable to grasp any of the facts, and that's always a challenge. As has been explained by council members and speakers, we're closer to $33,000 a month in rent. I don't know where this $1 a year came from. I've looked over every document and cannot find it anywhere. In regards to the disabled access parking, staff has answered that, so I will not. I think it's important to keep in mind that just because something is set up here, if it's a misrepresentation, I think as citizens, it's our responsibility to address those, whether it be trying to support a bogus lawsuit on disabled access parking, or whether it's to say that anytime we do things that are fair, honest, and equitable, we're hurting free enterprise. Actually, this is certainly a cause of inequity, and as we all know, a rising tide raises all boats, and so the more successful we make, the Boulevard and the different properties on the Boulevard, the more successful we make the city of Thousand Oaks. And so with that, if there are no further questions, that's my rebuttal, done in a minute and a half. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions? No? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Council discussion.
I move the staff recommendation that the ordinance be read in title only. Further reading be waived if no objection introduced.
Very good. Vote, please.
The motion carries 3-0 with Councilmember Price sustaining, and the ordinance title is an ordinance adopting Amendment Number 4 to Specific Plan Number 11 to change required parking ratios for restaurant and retail uses specified by municipal code to be consistent with parking ratios established by recently adopted Thousand Oaks Boulevard Specific Plan for Subarea A Private Commercial SPA 2011-70570.
Item 9A is Committee Commission and Board Reports, and Lisa Powell will be presenting the Social Services Grant Recommendations. Good evening, Ms. Powell.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Lisa Powell. As Chair of the Social Services Ad-Hoc Committee, I'm here tonight representing our other members to present our recommendations for the award of 25 grants totaling $195,810 for the grant year beginning July 1st this year. Also present tonight from the committee is our Vice Chair, Carol Burgess. The budget is almost evenly divided between federal CDBG funds and local social services endowment fund dollars. During the review process, our nine-member committee received requests totaling $928, nearly twice our actual budget. We reviewed 1,500 pages of written applications covering 35 programs. Following our appointment last September, the committee convened a pre-application workshop attended by representatives of local nonprofit organizations. From January through late March of this year, the committee met nine times, reviewed 1,500 pages of applications, and interviewed managers for each of the programs seeking funds. In order to prioritize the 35 funding requests, the committee relied on the criteria contained in Resolution 2007-098 that established the current ad hoc committee. The two highest priorities were given to programs that offer unduplicated essential services, such as emergency food and shelter, eviction prevention, and health services for primarily low-income families. Programs that serve all income groups were given lower priority, and new programs without a track record were given the lowest priority. Programs providing nonessential services were also given a lower priority. Using the City Council's criteria and given our budget constraints, the committee is recommending grants for 25 programs and is not recommending funding for 10 other programs, which, though very worthy, were for the most part determined to be either lower priority activities or nonessential services. As shown in our exhibit and in Attachment Number 1 to the committee's report, 31% of recommended grants cover emergency shelter and food programs and eviction prevention; 30% provide for senior services; 24% provide medical and health-related services; and 15% provide children's services. Many of these programs assist disabled and frail populations, and almost all primarily serve persons of very low or no income. The committee is requesting council's approval for 25 social service grants totaling $195,810. In closing, the committee members would also like to commend the two Thousand Oaks staff persons who assisted the committee throughout this process. Caroline Milton and Lynn Oshida were incredible assets and supports to both the process and to the committee members. Thank you for your time, and both myself and the staff are available for any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Powell? Dr. Glancy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't really have a question, Ms. Powell, but I do want to congratulate you and your committee for the hard work that you do. It's not the easiest task in the world to divvy up a relatively small pot. I think you did an admirable job. You follow your guidelines remarkably well, and thank you very, very much for what you've accomplished.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fox?
Yeah, if I could just kind of piggyback on Councilmember Glancy's comments. Most would not remember, but this committee used to be staffed or used to be headed by council members some time ago, and I was one of the council members that sat on the committee, and I know the people that now sit on the committee realize that it's a difficult task. And we did have citizens also participate, but it occurred to me way back when that, this is truly the folks' money, so to speak, and we tried to figure out how to do it equitably. And since we removed the council from the process, and we've done this with a number of committees, the citizens that have volunteered to serve have really done an outstanding job. And not only do they do a great job and make great recommendations of the council, but I think it kind of elevates everyone's awareness to the complexity and some of the challenges that the city faces, whether it's the council or Citizens Committee, on trying to do the right thing when there really is no clear right answer.
Right.
And so you've done a great job of following the established criteria. You make great rational choices, but it's human beings that are making those choices, not just somebody following a policy manual. And I think that's the key to the success of the committee, is you have people that are involved, that have some knowledge, no conflict of interest, but certainly knowledge of the services that are used. You guys do a great job, particularly now in the environment that we're in, when so many people are in need of so many things. We're fortunate to be able to continue to provide this service. A lot of cities don't. These services generally fall in government to county agencies, but we're still able to do it in Thousand Oaks, and you guys just do a very, very good job. Congratulations.
Well, I think all of the members are really very thankful at Thousand Oaks. The city of Thousand Oaks does have a process like this that's, you know, involves citizens, and that you're able to get citizens that are, you know, able and willing to spend the time and, you know, sifting through all that information and interviewing everybody. But we had a great, you know, great crew that really put a lot of thought and time into all these decisions. So thank you for your comments. I'll get them back to the committee somehow.
Very good.
And thank you, Ms. Powell, for the time you spent and the committee spent. And Ms. Milton, did you have something to add to?
I would just reiterate what the council members have said. This is an extraordinarily conscientious and dedicated group of residents. They attended approximately nine meetings of two to three hours each meeting, interviewing a representative of each of the organizations that were requesting funding. And in addition to that, each of them had to put in significant time at home to review, as Lisa said, those 1,500 pages of applications. And I think each member read every word, because that's the kind of dedication this group brought to the process. And also, when the committee was deliberating, and they were reviewing each and every potential recommendation that resulted in the report that is before you tonight, nearly every vote was 9-0 in the committee's deliberations, meaning that they were very, very much in sync and in agreement on their recommendations and their conclusions.
Thank you. We have three speakers, and the first speaker is Eric Sternad. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Irwin, council members and staff, thank you for just a few minutes. Eric Sternad, I'm the Executive Director at Interface Children and Family Services. I'm a resident of Simi Valley. Please don't hold that against me. I just wanted to come in support of the Social Service Funding Committee's recommendations and appreciate the fact that they do have a very challenging task that they have engaged in, and thankful that 2-on-1 has been included this year for $3,000. At least, that's the recommendation. I have provided a packet of information for you that hopefully you have with you. On the right side of that packet, there are two pieces of information I draw your attention to. One is the annual report for 2-on-1, and the second is a specific profile of callers to 2-on-1 in 2011 from the city of Thousand Oaks. And so you'll see that out of a total of 1,872 callers from Thousand Oaks residents to 2-on-1s in this last year, that represents about a 7% increase in calls. That's judged against about a 15% increase countywide, which is on top of a 10% increase the year before. So obviously, there's no surprise that a lot of folks are struggling. We're seeing that across the whole county. I would note that it may be just of interest for you to take a look at how Thousand Oaks stacks up compared to the county in terms of the types of needs that callers are expressing, and most of them track actually fairly closely to the rest of the county, judging those calls against the county calls. The one exception would be a slight increase, maybe about 4% or 5% increase over what we would typically see in the county, and those would be, that's the second highest category of need, mental health and addictions. So that's a particular issue of importance for your residents that I wanted to draw your attention to. Of course, Interface is proud to be part of the community conscience Under One Roof Project. We do provide mental health services, as well as access for residents locally here for a variety of programs. Now, as you are probably aware, 2-on-1 is funded by a variety of funding sources. County United Way is our major partner, First Five of Ventura County. Less than a quarter of the funding comes from cities, and so there's a funding formula that we came up with in collaboration with the cities a few years ago, based on the call volume. I have submitted a request for a total of $9,000 to the city, so I would... I have submitted a request for a total of $9,000 to the city, so I would ask for your consideration separately from this process for that, but I just wanted to basically express tonight that we're really appreciative of being included in the recommendations. And on behalf of 2-on-1 and all the staff who are serving the community, we're really proud to serve this community and will continue to do so as best we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sternad.
Mayor Irwin, members of the City Council, members of city staff, I am Rick Schrader. I am president of Many Mansions. I first want to thank you for your past support of Many Mansions. In particular, thank you for your recent funding of our much-needed rehabilitation at our Richmond Terrace property. We began rehab this week, and we expect it to be completed in May. And of course, thank you so much for your funding for our development of the Hillcrest Apartments. We're in construction. We're approximately a third of the way through the construction. But because we've received substantial financial support from the city for our acquisition and construction of new affordable housing and our rehabilitation of our existing housing, I think there's sometimes a perception in the community that we do not need any additional funding, especially from the city, to pay for our service programs that we provide at our affordable housing places. And this is not true. None of the funding that we receive from the City of Thousand Oaks or other funding sources for our affordable housing development can be used for our service programs. Yet, we are required by the city to provide these service programs. Indeed, we must raise $550,000 every year through grants and donations to support these programs. And this is why we applied this year for the social services grant funding for our planned children's program at our Hillcrest Apartments complex, our after-school tutoring program, our summer camp program, and other educational programs that we will provide the residents. So, we were very surprised and disappointed that the committee did not recommend us for funding. This does not seem right. These programs are expressly designed to serve a very low and extremely low population that we will have at Hillcrest. Half of the families will come from homelessness. And it doesn't seem right that the reason that was given for the denial was that our program will not begin until January 2013, six months into the 24-month grant cycle. We definitely appreciate the work of the committee. It's a very hard-working committee. We were treated with utmost consideration. But had we known that we would be precluded from funding because our program does not begin until January 2013, we could have asked for support from one of our other programs. That was not in the funding criteria, so we do ask for the committees, for the councils' reconsideration of the committee's recommendation. Alternatively, if we cannot be funded, we would ask the council to perhaps look at the policy of only accepting these applications every two years. I think there'd be more flexibility if you looked at it on a year-to-year basis. In closing, service programs are essential for a successful affordable housing. Housing is not enough, but these programs do cost money, and we do ask for your consideration and for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. And our last speaker is Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, resident of Niberry Park, a member of this committee for 20 years, minus three, I guess. And I basically got on it because, like Mr. Fox mentioned, everyone that applied was put in on the committee. Unfortunately, there's too much politics in the city, so I was not reappointed, and neither was the other senior member, Jackie Chang. And there is something to be said about experience and gray hair. And that's why I'm glad that Mr. Schrader came and spoke. The system is almost mechanical. I mean, staff has done a good job of coming up with the system, which is a very democratic system. And so, it is a good system. But as I said, maybe the councilwomen that interviewed me in the commission, I had asked that they should at least attend the one meeting to give direction to the members. Because basically, what is running now, I mean, Mr. Fox talked about the interference of having council members, basically now it's the staff that is guiding them. And it should really be the citizens. And especially when you have new members, they will do that. Not that staff has any ulterior motive, but there's a difference between staff. That's why we have elections. That's why we have elected people. In fact, I was the chair, I believe, in 2004, when I had a big hand, or bigger hand, not a big hand, but bigger hand, with Jackie Chang, actually, who was vice chair at the time, in coming up with the two-year plan. And being on the committee for a long time, it seemed like a waste of time and more efficient to go to the two-year. And retrospect, it's a wrong decision, and it should really be abolished. I'm surprised that the committee has not recommended that. And the problem that we had, and Jackie's letter with my notes is in the green packet, is that I had recommended that we should have some kind of audit of these agencies. And just the fear of the audit would keep the bad apples away. As you know, a lady who was with Sexual Abuse Committee really abused the organization. She's in jail and stole $200,000, including the city's money also. And there are other organizations, but we should debate that and come up with some way. And then the other final thing, since the time is up, is that our weakness is we don't support new programs. And there's no money. The mayor had promised to get an endowment, but there's no money, so maybe at least give the direction to give 50 grand or 25 grand or $100,000, some amount for new programs. It is not wrong, right? And the other thing I will again say is, this two-year thing should really be brought back, and you should have a meeting of the committee to discuss these things, rather than just the annual mechanical dole-out of the funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Ms. Milton, can you comment on the comments we got from the public?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Regarding Many Mansions, their program for children's services at the new Hillcrest Apartments was not being recommended for funding. However, that is obviously not any kind of a vote of no confidence in Many Mansions. The city and the former Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency has, through the years, significantly advocated and supported practically all, if not all, of Many Mansions activities, and they are a truly great organization. I would like to make two points with respect to Many Mansions. Pursuant to Contract 9176-2009, the city provides Many Mansions with up to $95,000 annually in shared revenues from the operations of the Shiloh Gardens Apartments, which are owned by the city and managed by Many Mansions. These funds can be used by Many Mansions, and here I'll quote from the contract, "to fund its service programs in the City of Thousand Oaks directly benefiting Thousand Oaks residents." That sum of $95,000 exceeds the entire amount of the city's CDPG funding that can be used on social services programs. So, the city is already giving Many Mansions up to $95,000 a year to assist with its service programs at all of its local locations, at all of its apartments and service locations. And then I'd just like to briefly talk about Many Mansions' application, which was reviewed by the committee. In response to question number 20, and I don't think the council has had an opportunity to read through these applications, that's why the committee process is in place. But in response to question 20, which is, "How does your organization expect to fund this program?", Many Mansions responded this way. "Many Mansions is committed to funding this program beyond this grant request. Our programs have always been well-supported by the community, and we expect that support to extend to our new Hillcrest Apartments and the programs offered at that site. Funding for the project comes from private foundations and corporations, as well as from private donations and proceeds from our semi-annual Bowls of Hope events and other fundraisers." So, the committee felt that, as worthwhile as this program is, that it appears Many Mansions has other alternatives and other options to fund this children's services program at Hillcrest Apartments. Also, when they completed their application, Many Mansions indicated this is a new program. However, the staff pointed out to the committee that this is actually an enhancement to an existing program, because Many Mansions, as they indicate elsewhere in their application, have been doing the children's services program since 1988. And I think that was where the committee decided to rate this program as a priority three, because that's for enhancements to existing programs. It's for activities such as mentoring and counseling, which essentially covers a good portion of what they do in the children's services. I mean, the fact that Many Mansions labeled their application "new" could have meant that the committee would have rated them a priority five, because new programs do have the least priority. So, in other words, Many Mansions is a wonderful organization, but I think the committee felt that perhaps they didn't need the money as badly as some of the other social services organizations that came before the committee.
Could you also comment on, is there a need to relook at the two-year funding cycle?
I've been working with the committee for about, maybe, 12 or 13 years. We used to do it every year, and we got a lot of complaints from the organizations who said it was just too cumbersome and administratively difficult on the staff to have to prepare these applications every year and not to have any certainty from one year to the next whether the city was going to support their organization. Just to give you an idea, here is the Many Mansions application. It's about 50 pages, maybe 60 pages, including financial exhibits. So, it really is a major activity for the organizations to have to prepare something like this every year. And as I say, many of them complained that it was just an administrative burden to have to go through this every year. And I think the current two-year process works out well. It's less administrative burden on the organizations, and also it gives them a little more certainty because they know they're going to get funding for two consecutive calendar years or fiscal years.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. Do we have questions? Councilmember?
May I?
You may.
I would move approval of staff's recommendation on Item 9A. That would be items number one, two, and three. Did I do that properly? Thank you.
I just want to make one comment. Dr. Glancy and I are members of the Thousand Oaks Rotary. They are receiving money for an immunization program. We have consultants, the city attorney, and since we're not on the board of the Thousand Oaks Rotary, we can still vote on this motion. Any other comments?
The motion carries for zero.
We're on Department Reports. Item 10A, Fiscal Year 1112 Midyear Budget Update. And our introduction is going to be done by Scott Mitnick, our city manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to give you a little overview of what we're going to do tonight, and then our Finance Director, John Adams, will present the report. As a reminder, we use a two-year budget process. We talked a little bit about that during the social service grant review. And the budget years are fiscal year 2011 through '12, and then fiscal year 2012 through 2013. And we're about three-quarters of the way done with fiscal year 2011 and '12. At your study session on March 27th, Finance Director John Adams did give you a quick, brief overview of the budget situation. And then the bottom line is, we're going to end this year okay. We're going to end balanced. The council has a long history of adopting balanced budgets, and your past practice in terms of doing a 10-year financial strategic plan, adopting balanced budgets, living within our means, has really paid off with this organization. And it's been tough over the last several years, and John will remind you of the budget cuts, the layoffs, the 85 positions that we've eliminated from the budget, and a number of other tough choices that have been made historically. Right now, in our local economy, we're actually doing pretty good. The economy is clearly turning around. There's more economic activity. Sales tax revenues are picking up. Property values are stabilizing, if not increasing. But the problem that we face here in the Canal Valley, in Thousand Oaks, is not one with our local economy. It's due, and we've given you the updates over many months now, with the self-inflicted budget problems in Sacramento. The legislature and the governor have made a number of detrimental decisions that have impacted local government at the county level and at the city level throughout our state. And we've given you many examples. John will touch on some of them. The elimination of the redevelopment agency has had a significant impact on the community. That's going to translate into lost positions and significant budget cuts. The decision with the vehicle license fee to do the realignment is costing us several hundred thousand dollars. The decision at the state level to end funding of libraries, that's also having a negative impact. At the federal level, the CDPG cuts, you've heard from the program earlier, the allocations to us have decreased just about every year, and the federal government is decreasing the amount of money that's available for transportation projects, and we continue to lobby for the 101-23 interchange project. So, what John will do is talk to you about some of the initial steps he's recommending to be taken tonight in anticipation of next year's budget. That's the fiscal year 1213 budget. He's recommending that you authorize staff to spend the next few months going through the further reductions that we'll need to do to come back and develop a game plan. Staff will work. If council concurs, staff will work with the City Council Finance and Audit Committee over the next two, three months, and then return to you on June 26. We are also having a closed session tonight at the end of this meeting, and the purpose of that closed session is to talk about upcoming labor negotiations. We have a couple of the units whose contract expires at the end of this fiscal year. I'm sorry, our fiscal year is July 1 through June 30, and staff will be seeking your direction on how to deal with the upcoming negotiations. So, with that, if okay with the mayor, we turn it over to John Adams, our Finance Director, and he'll guide you through. And you do have copies of the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Irwin, City Council. I have about several slides. I'm going to try to quickly go through. If you have questions as I go through, please ask. I like to try to answer those questions as we're going through the slide. Just quickly, the plan, or at least the outline for this evening, just to give you a brief overview of the history for several of you, you're very familiar with all the reductions and adjustments we have done for the last five years. I want to recap those for you. I also want to give you a quick update on the fiscal year 1112, which is the current fiscal year that we are currently in. Remember, we do have a two-year budget. This is the first year of the two-year budget. We also have a five-year capital plan, which was updated last June of 2011. And then we have our financial strategic plan, which is our 10-year forecast that was also updated at the same time. So, let me give you a brief overview of fiscal year 1112. Then we talk about the 1213 forecast, specifically on the general fund, because that's where we're seeing the impacts. And then we talk about budget challenges and then the upcoming calendar. Okay, so, for budget history, this is just sort of a recap of what has happened since 2008, specifically in the general fund, the 2008, specifically in the general fund, the library fund. I think what I want to sort of say is that we've made significant reductions based on revenue declines over the past five years. The next graph I'm going to show you, that's the brief history, is to show you that at one point, general fund revenue was at $75 million. You can see that at the first 2007, that's your red, your blue dot, just over 75 million. And for fiscal year ending 2010, revenues dipped under 65,000. It was an $11 million change in revenue. Based on that change, we had to make certain reductions. First of all, in 2007, 2008, revenues exceeded expenditures, operating expenditures, and that money was put aside for capital projects. We have significant infrastructure, so that additional revenue was to help fund future capital improvements. And then 2009 happened, which was the first year in which we actually had an operating loss. That operating loss was less than 1% of the overall budget, but still we had an operating loss. And then 2010, we had another operating loss. And then last year, we, based on making reductions in personnel, we had a slight operating gain. Just to show you this, the yellow line is revenues and as revenues declined, where we cut for $11 million was in personnel. That blue line shows you how personnel or positions that are funded by the general fund library have been reduced. As Scott Mitnick had mentioned, proposal at this point is 85 positions funded either from the general fund or the library fund. And so based on declining revenues of $11 million, we've had to reduce positions at 85. Next slide. So quickly, just fiscal year 1112, every mid-year, January, February, finance spends a lot of time looking over the projections that, and the adopted budget that was done in June of the prior year. It includes our payroll analysis. As you know, payroll is a large percentage of our expenditures. We look at our revenue forecasting, how sales tax forecasting, how property tax forecasting. And we look at other expenditure reviews. But this year, the uniqueness of the redevelopment agency being eliminated and doing the analysis to determine what the impact is to the general fund. So with all this, we are going to give you a brief presentation on the 1112 fiscal year and then we're going to show you some projections for '12 and '13. Let's go back to, yeah, that slide. Just to remind council, total budget for the city for fiscal year 1112 adopted was $203 million. Largest single source is the general fund at $67, $68 million, 33%. Redevelopment agency is 13%. It's just over 25 million, almost 27, 26 million. That in itself will be gone. That will not support operations within reimbursement to the general fund, but will be used to pay for debt and to finish certain capital projects. This is just to show you how that 203,000 is broken out. Largest component is salary and benefits. This is citywide. The second largest component is capital improvements. A lot of our other funds, gas tax, wastewater, water, support significant capital improvements. So first of all, staff, finance staff reviewed all funds. I showed you the different funds that we had. We looked at every fund. We paid particular attention to the general fund, the library and the theater fund. All other governmental funds, gas tax seemed to be in place, at least as far as being balanced based on what was adopted June 2011. We also looked at all enterprise funds. The only one that is not self-sustaining, which council is aware of, is the theater fund. Water rates were recently raised, which makes sure that that fund is self-supporting going forward. General fund. So just quickly, the revised revenue budget at this point is 65.3 million. Sales tax is your largest component at 38%. Intergovernmental, which is the VLF, is at 16%. And then we have property tax at 11 and in charges for services at 8. So what I'm showing here is the first column is 1011, which is the actuals for 1011. 1112, the second column is the budget. This is what you had adopted. And based on our current projections for February, March, projected revenue will only be down $100,000. This does take into account the VLF takeaway, which the net is 400,000. But we do have other increases and sales tax was up 200,000. There have been some other adjustments other places. So for fiscal year 1112, revenues aren't that far off from what our original budget is. Just to show you, Scott had made a comment earlier about the economy improving. This is just to show you taxable sales. I usually show you sales tax. The graph has a little more variation. That's because of the cash flow with the state. But this is just to show you taxable sales by calendar year. And you can certainly see the decline up through 2009 from 2007, but for 2010 and 2011, we have seen increases in taxable sales, which means people are spending money again. This is just our major other revenues, just to show you, for the most part, they are flat. We haven't seen a lot of growth in the other four major revenues. So quickly on general fund expenditures, this is revised budget. Revised budget also includes prior year carryforward. The amount is usually a little higher than the original adopted budget because of the carryforwards, 67.4 million. But I think you should just focus simply on the police contract, which is almost 40% and salary and benefits at 44%. Almost 85% of your expenditures in the general fund are in these two categories. So again, 2010, 2011, that was the actuals. We have 2011, 2012, which is the budget. This is what you adopted and the revised number. And then the projected. I want to pay a little close attention to salary and benefits, specifically the $800,000 that is under budget. That's mainly because of several unfilled vacant positions that are being, that have been funded but have not been filled. A good example, economic development manager. I have a senior accountant in finance. City attorney has an administrative secretary. So we've had some salary savings, which will help offset future losses of revenue. And then police contract, even though we projected 25.6, which was a 5% increase to contract cost, was just a little over 4%. So there's a $200,000 savings there. All right, next slide. This is just to show you the revenues and expenditures. I think what I would focus on is last year, we did have an increase from operations in the third column I have projected. I do have a slight increase or at least an operating gain, a little less than 700,000. But that is based on our current projections. What I like to say is, one way or the other, we're within 1% of budget. We're only going to, whether it's an operating gain or loss, if we're within 600,000 one way or the other, we're in pretty good shape. Quickly on library fund, you've seen this graph before. Most of the revenue is from property tax. 70% of the revenue is from property tax. The other portion, the 2.1 million, is from the general fund. This is what the general fund does to support the libraries that we have. The one item that is here that is, won't be coming in is the state participation at 45,000. That revenue was eliminated. Here are the expenditures, mostly salary and benefits. They, over the last several years, have lost 20 full-time equivalents or positions. Salary and benefits still represent 55% of their costs and you see some of their other costs there. Overall, the library fund, even with that loss of 45,000, there is savings in salary and benefits. There's some MNO savings. We anticipate that expenditures and revenues will be a couple hundred thousand under the budget.
Hey, John, just a brief comment because you're on the library fund. Just of note, I was commenting to Mr. Mitnick, I don't remember how long ago, but it was, it was certainly within the last 10 years or more. The library fund used to be funded out of the general fund upwards of $4 million.
Yes, there's.
So that's, and now we're at 2 million. So I just, I point that out because those are the things that if you haven't been around a while, they go unnoticed. We're at 2 million now, so any notion that we're not making service cuts that affect your everyday person, that, we have a great library system, but you know, the city has taken a lot of pride in subsidizing our library system to the tune of $4 million and I think actually a little more than 4 million. Now we're at 2 million, so it's, I think it's worthy of note.
That's correct. All right, so just on, just to summarize on the library, even though we are seeing some reduced expenditures, we also, in revenues, the impact of the general fund will not be increased based on that lost revenue from the state. The other comment I want to just make is, as you're aware, the city did make a proposal to run or to partner with the Simi Valley in running their, or helping them run their own library. If the city is successful in that bid, staff will be back to mend their budget for those operations and for that revenue as well in running their library. Just quickly on theaters fund, again, I'm really just focusing on the three funds that we usually are concerned about, general fund, library, and the theaters fund. Quickly, this is the revenues. Over, almost a third is from labor sales. As you know, a lot of our technical support is reimbursed from the performances or for the companies that are putting on the performances. Rentals of the facility and the theaters is $1 million, which is 26%. And then you have box office charges, which, again, related to selling and managing the box office. As far as budget expenditures, almost 50% of their budget expenditures are salary and benefits. Professional and contract services is everything from maintenance to marketing to janitorial. Overall, last year, they only had a $300,000 operating loss, so they used reserves for that 300,000. Based on the declines in performances, we had budgeted a $600,000 loss this year, operating loss. We are now projecting a half a million, so $100,000 less as far as expenditures. Go next slide. I think this slide just shows you where revenues and where performances were. You can see the revenues increase from 2007, 2008, and that's at the point in which we started taking the full cost recovery approach. So revenues had a significant increase. But with the economy, performances went from 450 down to right around 350. So certainly with performances going down, that has impacted revenues. We do see an increase both on revenues and expenditures, but that's because the economy has improved and performance numbers have started going up. This just shows you how revenues and expenditures have tracked over the last eight, nine years. Certainly there was a point in which revenues were under expenses prior to the full cost recovery. In 2008, 2009, revenues started matching and exceeding expenditures and then now we're back to the point where expenditures are exceeding revenues. So theater fund challenges, you know, I think one is performance numbers. We will see, hopefully, performance numbers to increase as economy does increase. Competition, there's always competition. Cal State Northridge's new facility could provide some competition. Current fees, one of the things we're going to talk about is that theater staff will be returning in June to discuss fees and their budget. And there'll be that discussion about how we go about setting fees and should it be at full cost recovery. In the past, to balance the budget, certainly we've deferred maintenance. As council is aware, one of the capital projects for the general fund this year is to do some maintenance improvements to the theaters. That's being paid by the general fund, not the theater fund. So that's another way that we balance the budget for the theaters. And then of course, as we have had operating losses in the theaters, we've been using reserves and those reserves are declining. And then the third one is just programming. Okay, next slide. I think this picture says it all and I think Scott made a comment earlier. I would not be up here, I don't think now, talking to you about fiscal year 1112 and probably would not be in front of you in June talking about fiscal year 1213 if it wasn't for our governor's state takeaways. Everything else, as far as the economy, the improvements to sales tax and property tax, everything that, relatively speaking, that we projected last June as far as the recovery. But with that said, redevelopment, the impact for the elimination of redevelopment specifically is at least 1.5 on operations, which is immediately. RDA staffing, that chargeback, there's seven FTEs that are paid by the redevelopment agency. The impact is $1 million per year. Part of the recommendation tonight is to develop a, to get authorization, develop a strategy to address that and present that to you June 26 for fiscal year 1213. With that said, the next one is cost allocation, what we call central service reimbursements. This is the indirect cost. This is the cost of the city attorney's office providing support to the redevelopment agency. This is reimbursement for finance, providing support to the redevelopment agency. This is reimbursement from city clerk, HR. The impact to operations is a half a million. Part of tonight's recommendation is to unfund three positions that are currently vacant. And so that's one of the actions that you'll be taking this evening, is going from 82 unfunded positions up to 85 unfunded positions. Have a question, Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I think it might be helpful as we move through this. Theater fund, how much is in reserves? You don't have that in your chart.
Yeah, I don't. I believe it's just over 1.2. So we, what I should tell you is, is that based on the adopted budget that you have in place right now, based on the projections that we'd done back in June, that we were using approximately 600,000 each year of those reserves. And at the end of that two-year budget, we would have depleted the available reserves to fund operations.
Right. And so, and you did a good job. I know this is not new to the staff, but primarily for the community and the press and the people that are paying attention. The theater has unique challenges.
Correct.
For example, you mentioned the possibility of cost, full cost recovery. That works on an accounting, from an accounting perspective.
Or bean counters perspective.
It doesn't work on a marketing perspective.
Correct.
And there is a threshold by which we can charge for ticket sales that if we go above it, people aren't going to buy tickets because it's too expensive and there's this diminishing return situation. I don't expect you to respond to it tonight in depth, but I think council's looking for the best and the brightest that we have with respect to staff. And I know we have some new folks with theaters. And that is to put it on the radar for the council today that if things stay the way they are, in about two years, we're going to be out of money in reserves.
Let me make a brief comment and then I'll let, I'll turn it over to Barry to make a few comments. I think certainly from our perspective, myself and Barry, is that when we come back to you in June, theaters will be a completely separate discussion to discuss the long-term financial sustainability of the theater, which would include the discussion of the fees, discuss a lot of different strategies to address that.
Right. And you know, John, I don't want to sidetrack you. I really don't.
No, no, I'd rather have him make a few comments because I think, you know, again, trying to put together this presentation, I wanted it to try, always be brief and concise and stuff like that. But it is a very important thing when we look at it just from one operation and we need to have specific focus just on the theater fund.
Okay.
I know it's a very small percentage of our overall budget, but it's the one, I think, that we have the largest challenges regardless of the dollar amount.
Okay. Good evening. You know, I've been here two short months and during that time have spent a lot of my focus kind of looking at the state of operations with the theater. And a couple of things that struck me right away is we do a tremendous amount of shows where we are not coming close to capturing what we're expending through the operations to have the theater run. The theater's very busy, but as a result, because of the number of performances we're doing, that's pushing us into overtime, sometimes when we have performances that may be drawing 50 people. So one of the things that we're looking at is a way to not only maximize the number of shows, but also be sure that we're increasing the attendance, which also then allows us to recapture monies through other sources, which will help the bottom line. When we come back to you in June, one of the things we'll be doing is presenting a strategy of how we can create a better balance between community programs, which is, which is an important aspect of why these theaters are here, but also to increase our ability to attract more national attractions. And if you look at some of our recent national performances, we use Kobe Calais because that's rather recent. You know, those are shows that are selling out and bringing us, you know, profit both from a ticket revenue standpoint, increased user fees, increased concession fees across the board. So one of our strategies is that by creating a better balance between national touring attractions and community attractions, that will allow us to improve our bottom line. I think our focus is not so much on the number of shows, but it's on the quality of performances and trying to maximize the attendance on a per-performance basis.
Okay, very good. And you know, I think, John, you, I think articulated the challenges that we have. As a percentage of the overall budget, yes, the theaters is not, you know, it's not life or death. However, the fact of the matter is it's a $70 million, part of a $70 million public infrastructure improvement. infrastructure improvement that I think we need to be paying very, very close attention to. I know it's on everybody's radar, but the fact of the matter is, this is a big deal.
Agreed.
It is a very big deal. And these are the type of things that if cities and communities aren't paying attention three and four years before they reach a crisis situation where they're talking about closing theaters or subsidizing, you know, serious money out of the General Fund to keep a non-critical municipal service in operation, then we have problems. And we're getting enough information now that, I'll just put it right on the record right here, the council ultimately needs to be held accountable for this. We have great staff, but we need to be asking the questions now and challenging and/or approving a roadmap, which apparently is coming back in June, that at least as best we can tell is going to put us in a situation where we're going to be able to continue to sustain the theater operations. The good news is, is that things are getting better. The challenging part is, we're still subsidizing at a pretty substantial rate, of which we're going to run out of revenues or reserves, I should say, you know, in a couple of years. So, you know, I just think from a council perspective, that's why it's great that we have these mid-year kind of updates, that we just put it on, you know, on everybody's radar that this is a very big deal while it's just the theaters' operations. You know, it is arguably one of the most high-profile city services that we provide. It's not unlike the discussion we had many years ago regarding Las Obles Golf Course, when we were dealing with how many rounds per year versus the return to the city. And I'm not quite sure of the number, I think it was 100,000 rounds or something around 100,000, 300,000.
Yeah, back in the early 2000s, it was.
Exactly. Where, yes, we could have more people play in the golf course, but it also tore up the golf course, which means we had to do capital improvements sooner, you know, huge investment. So there's that balance. And I think the theaters is a good analogy. We have to find that balance that we're self-sustaining, but it's not, we don't go too far where we drive customers away, you know, that whole thing. And I think we did a good job with the golf course because that's doing a pretty good job right now.
Right.
There was a time where we were actually subsidizing the golf course. So, anyway, just a commentary, you guys did a good job responding to the questions. I didn't want to take us too off track, but I think the council will be looking forward to that report in June, and maybe even, you know, we'll look to the city manager, you know, I don't know about a study session, but we really do need to kind of pay very close attention to this.
And I think I will make the comment that we had planned on separating that out and specifically discussing the theater and its, and the opportunities that are there to make it a very successful operation. So Barry and I have already sort of strategized on that, and that will be brought to you.
Right.
And let me, I think.
Mr. Adams, before you go on, Mr. Mitnick had another comment.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we greatly appreciate the council members pointing that out about the fund balance. And as a reminder, we've been watching this fund balance decrease for a number of years. And back in 2006 or '07, we did bring in outside consultants to take a look at the theaters and how they work and our relationship with the symphony. And we did come to council, and it was a very tough set of meetings, very tough decision, should the theater still be forced to be 100 percent self-sufficient? Because what was happening is theater ticket prices were rising, we were putting additional fees on there, and we were, we continually increased the cost of parking. So the council made a decision that, because that goes back to 1984 advisory vote to build this place, and it said, "Don't have a subsidy from the General Fund." So a tough policy decision five, six years ago, and this is the outcome of that decision. It was a good public policy decision because we were seeing theater prices go up, and the council was, had a number of residents saying, "Hey, we can't afford to go to our local theater" because the ticket prices were rising. So we are working hard to strike the balance, the program that Mr. Tacoma's working on. We'll be back in front of council, and we are confident we have a good game plan that we're working on. But we live in a hyper-competitive world right now, and the recession and the residents' lack of discretionary income or a decrease in their discretionary income has been challenging. So we're fully aware, and in our documents, we are concerned about the balance dropping below a million dollars. And that's what's happening. We're very close to that. So council, thank you for your indulgence on that.
Back to me, all right. I was talking about Mr. Brown. Okay, cost allocation. Let me just go to, we talked briefly about the direct and indirect impacts to staffing and reimbursements to the General Fund. That's the million dollars in RDA staffing.
Mr. Adams?
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, could you go back one slide?
To the picture?
No, the slide that was, the HAPS funding is being eliminated.
Well, that's the first one. Let me, this is the first one, let's go to the next. On top of the.
No, I, it happened, I was looking at the numbers today. Are those, are the residents already being warned that this is going to be happening?
Well, let's, let's talk about this for a second. Right now, the HAPS program is on our EOPS. What you had adopted in January included the HAPS program. It actually included the program through the two-year budget cycle. We have been working with the DOF in that review of the EOPS. In their review of the EOPS, they had several comments or concerns, but this program was not one of those because it is a program that's in place with participants. You guys adopted a resolution, put the funding in place, so this one was not one that was questioned. So at this point, staff believes, at this point, based on the initial review by the DOF on our EOPS, that this program will be available for 12, 13 because it's part of the budget, but will not be available beyond that period of time. Now, with that said, and I don't want to get too much into the detail, but certainly the EOPS is just the first thing. The ROPS, which is the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, has to be adopted by the Oversight Board, which will be either at the end of this month or the first meeting in May, mid-May. That then would be reviewed again, and we would hope that if it's on the EOPS and the Department of Finance doesn't have concerns on the EOPS, that would be approved as part of the ROPS. So the answer to your question is, staff believes at this point that it's available for 12, 13. It's not 100 percent guaranteed because we do not have a authorized ROPS or approved ROPS. At that point, the funding will not be available. And that, and the reason why we're highlighting that is because if you've looked at the numbers, we provide this benefit to about 600 low-income seniors. It's not a lot of money, 200,000, the monthly benefit, and if you look at it, in the scheme of things, it's not a lot of money, but it does impact very vulnerable, very low-income seniors, and that is a concern of staff, and that's why we're highlighting here in the staff report. Hopefully, I covered that close enough. Okay. The other programs, housing rehab, which we identified in the report, but I think the larger point I want to make was just CIP projects with the adoption of the Sunset or the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, the improvements that were going to be part of that, about $7 million is not available, but any, going forward from the Redevelopment Agency. So if the Redevelopment Agency wasn't enough, that impact at least operationally is 1.5. The state did realignment, and that realignment, the impact at the Thousand Oaks is almost, well, it's 400 and I think it was almost 500,000 in VLF, but they are providing some public safety grants, and so the net impact is 387,000. So on top of the Redevelopment Agency for this year and the elimination of that going forward, VLF, because of the realignment, the impact at Thousand Oaks is approximately 400,000. And that's not just this year, that's going forward. Now, with that said, the league has filed a lawsuit against the state, and that, I believe, is being litigated, and I think there's a hearing sometime in May. You know, whether they're successful or not, the argument is this is in violation of Prop 22. The reason why the Redevelopment Agency was eliminated is because the AB 27 was in violation of Prop 22. So again, 387,000. Tonight, we're also recommending to offset that by recognizing police contract savings and reductions in salary and benefit costs for unfilled positions. The next slide. So I talked about Redevelopment Agency, I talked about VLF, and the third impact is the two, the libraries. Only 45,000, but still within the library, that is significant based on all the reductions that they've had. And I couldn't forget to mention that the county funding that was eliminated last year was also 350. So between the two, $400,000 has been lost continuing going forward. Just to give you some samples of state impacts, I mean, I think we talked about redevelopment and VLF, but we need to look at really the larger history. Everyone is familiar with ERAF shifts, hopefully, that's Education Augmentation Fund. It's been cumulative, over $20 million since the '90s, 2000s. We've heard of the triple flip and VLF swaps with property. That's what generated Prop 1A. With that, they couldn't go after our General Fund anymore, that's when they started going after the RDA, and that's where we had the CRAF. Prior to the RDA elimination, 12.7 million dollars from the RDA just in 2000. And then 2010, we did Prop 22. We thought redevelopment was protected, at least revenues. Well, the state figured that one out, they eliminated RDAs. And then most recently, they took VLF. So that is sort of what the state has done to us over the years. I think, you know, we have a solution, which is how to, you know, determine financial independence from the state. Federal funding, just quickly. Mr. Mitnick mentioned CBG funding, I'll show you a graph. Funding has declined over 25 percent if you take a look at the past 10 years. Certainly, he mentioned transportation, the environment that's in, at the nation's capital related to funding deficit reductions. Certainly, federal funding is going to be limited as we go forward. And then ARA, which provided a lot of funding over the last couple of years related to infrastructure, is ending. So this is just CBG. We had some spikes in the early 2000s, but more or less 800,000 down to 600,000, 25 percent. That reduction has been really absorbed from the General Fund. Let's go next slide. Federal grants, just to show you, sporadic certainly, but you can certainly see the ARA funding that was back in 2011, and then now we're back to 2012. This is what's projected for this year. Going forward, certainly that number will even go down farther based on deficit reduction plans. So let's talk local. General Fund, we talked about sales tax. Sales tax is increasing, but we do project 2% to 3% over the next few years as far as increases the sales tax. Property tax is increasing, but remember, it's capped by the 2% of CPI. So we do have an increase this year, we're anticipating another increase next year in property tax. Low interest rates, you know, we do manage $200 million. Rates have decreased almost 70 percent over the last five years. And then building activity, decline in building activity. We've seen some increases, especially in 2011, as far as building activity going up. I'll show you a graph that shows that. So local economy is improving, certainly not the growth that we've seen when we were in the growth mode, but at least it's recovering to what we can expect to be reasonable in the new normal. Let's go to the next slide. I showed this slide before. Really, the green line is Thousand Oaks. Sales tax did not dip as much as it did throughout the state and the county, but because we didn't dip as much, we haven't increased as much as some of the others as far as the state and the county. Next slide. Property tax, going back in '06, '07, we're at 8% growth throughout the county, almost 12%. But as their declines, they went farther down, our declines weren't as far, and then we've come up. Let's go to the next slide. Citywide annual interest rates, as I said, 70 percent. Look at 4.5% back in 2007, now under 1.5% is what we're earning on our portfolio. You know, part of the benefit is, is we can be borrowing money for less, but the problem is we're not doing any real borrowing at this point. So really, this is money on reserves. That revenue that we're receiving is used to offset operating expenditure. So that is an operating revenue, interest earnings, but certainly, we're not issuing debt, we're not borrowing a lot of money. It's really an impact to our operating revenues. Building activities, just to show you, 2004, 10,000 permits certainly dipped down to almost 5,000. 2009, 2010, we've seen a slight uptick in 2011, but you can see the revenues also follow those declines. So certainly going forward, you're not going to see the 2004, 2005 numbers, you're going to see the 2009, 2010 numbers. So quickly, on the expenditure side, law enforcement contract cost increases. We've seen a significant reduction in workforce. We will see reduced service levels. We're entering in negotiations, and we have retirement costs that are out there. So let's go look at a few slides. First of all, police costs. Showed this slide before. Our average increase over the past nine years, 6.6 percent. Certainly, in 2009, 2010, we were lucky not to see increases in our contract rates when our budget was most strained, but recently, 4.6 percent increase. Next year's budget anticipates a 5%. We're hoping that that, those contract costs don't exceed the 5%. Just want to show you police contract versus sales tax. Police contract has increased. Sales taxes showed some variations. At one point, the police contract was a couple million dollars higher than our top revenue. Police contract is yellow, and the blue is sales tax. Let's go to the next slide. Staffing, this is a graph just to show you the 85 positions that have been reduced. This is all funds. At 1.07, 08, we had almost 600 employees, we're down to just a little over 500 employees. 14 percent decline across all funds. But most of that has been, as you can tell, absorbed or reduced in the General Fund, the Library Fund. We look at the other funds, we've had a couple decreases in wastewater, but we've had some other increases in landscaping and some other funds. And mostly, that's just allocations, people focusing in different areas. But the 85 positions have been in General Fund and the Library. Next slide. So this is the breakout, this is the reduction for each, each department within the General Fund. Certainly, I, we sorted on how large each department is. Police, over that five, over that five-year period, seven position Public Works, 20, Community Development, 20, Finance, 10, City Clerk, Cultural Affairs. I will say on the city managers, that is not that we've increased staffing necessarily in city managers, we've just moved people around from different departments. So that offsets with Cultural Affairs. Talked a little about retirement costs. I do want to say CalPERS recently changed their discount rate. That impact is 1% to 2% of payroll, but overall, CalPERS has earned a rate of return over the last 20 years, over 9%. So certainly, they're still above what their actuarial number is, but they did reduce it from a conservative perspective. I know this graph is very busy, but I think what I would want to focus on is the first few years in the blue. There was points in the '90s in which the city actually had an employer contribution, meaning that the city was paying the employer's portion of the retirement normal cost. In the mid-'90s, '97 through 2004, the city did not have or did not pay an employer rate. The employer rate was zero, and that was because we were overfunded. That's how PERS does it, whether we should have been paying normal cost, which would have been based on what the benefits were earning at that point, certainly is part of the governor's proposal as far as not having a pension holiday, at least paying the normal cost. But you can see the city did benefit for eight, nine years, not paying any employer rate. And then you see the increases in 2005, 2006, 2007. We have been hovering between that 10 and 14 or 15 percent. Rates will go up because of the loss specifically in 2011, but those are our projections through 2014. Let's go to the next one. Other comments, reduction development fees. I talked about the reductions, almost 75 percent. And then the TDA funding, I'm going to show a quick graph on that. Whether that happens in 2011, or 2013, or 2014, the point is, is that we will lose that funding to support streets and infrastructure, it will be simply used for transit. So here's development impact fees. This is not including wastewater or water, but with that said, from 2002, 2003, you see right around 3 million. Our most current fiscal year was just, just about 700,000. You're really looking at going 75 percent the other way. So that money is not going to be, I mean, future money to support infrastructure and streets, and that's how we've been using the money, has declined significantly. So talked about TDA funding. This graph just shows you the last five years, what the city has been allocating in TDA funding is in the first column or the second column. It shows the third column what we spent on streets, and then a percentage of the It shows the third column what we spent on streets, and then a percentage of the TDA funding, and transit. I think you want to focus on 11, 12. Certainly, our transit costs have gone up. We've allocated more to transit, which is about 63% and about 37% to streets. But that 1.4, 1.5 million that we are using for streets will not be available going forward. And that is a significant impact when we try to spend between four and five million for street projects. So I talked about just some of our challenges. First of all, I talked about the general fund, the library, the theaters. I talked about all of our challenges. We have lots of challenges out there. We talked theaters. But now I want to just talk about what do we see this as far as impacting 2012. I'm not going to get into any other fund other than the general fund, because I think that's really where our main focus is right now, specifically the way the redevelopment agency is hitting it. So you have an adopted budget for 2012. That's what you did last June, you did two-year, two one-year budgets. So what we're showing you in the first column is projected for 11, 12, which I have shown you. I'm showing you the budget, 12, 13 is what you've budgeted, and then 12, 13 projected. From a revenue side, that decline is about 2.2 million. Once you take out VLF, once you talk about the impacts for the redevelopment, both the direct and indirect staffing, in which the redevelopment funds or reimburses the general fund, 2.2 million swing just on revenues. And there's some other changes there, but, you know, we're in that $2 million range just on, just on the RDA and just on VLF. And then we have expenditures. One of the things you are doing tonight is you're unfunding three positions. Those three positions will be unfunded for next year. That's where you're really seeing the reduction as far as salary and benefits, is between three, between $300,000 and $400,000, based on our most current projections. With that said, because of the police contract being, you know, a little less than this year than it is next year, the 5% isn't as much, so there's $100,000 in projected savings. But only 500,000 in reduced expenditures. So if we go to the next slide. At this point, what I'd like to try say is, is that just starting off without making any adjustments other than the three unfunded positions, we're at $1,007,000. And I would sort of ballpark that between 1.7 and 1.9. But as we get into finer detail, what we're talking about is, you know, a gap between 1, you know, 1.7, 1.9. And as we go through and start working towards June 26, we'll identify the exact number and then also come up with solutions for you to adopt on June 26. And really, I believe for June 26, we will probably be only looking at the general fund, maybe the library fund, and then the theaters will be a completely different discussion to talk about the long-term strategy with the theater. So with that said, council, you know, we'll be back to you in June 26 with recommendations, new projections, revised projections for the general fund. We'll talk about how to address the redevelopment impacts, talk about what the true impact of the VLF is. I have no idea. Maybe the league will be successful, and that money will come back, and that will solve at least 500,000. But with that said, we need to plan for what is in front of us at this point. I think Scott talked about, we do have a Finance Hot Committee meeting scheduled. They've always provided great support, a lot of direction for us. The RDA meeting is actually sooner, the 25th. We're starting labor negotiations in the next two months, or over the next two months, and then our plan is to be out back in front of you June 26. So tonight's recommendation, there's four recommendations there, I won't read them, but staff is available for any questions or comments.
Do we have questions of staff? Okay. Councilmember Fox.
Right, on page 75, just because the public doesn't have the benefit of a, of a staff report, could you just briefly go over the police contract costs in particular items 1, 2, and 3?
Yeah, just, I think it's important. This is what's on page 74 through 75. Part of putting back where we've been, back as part of the two-year deliberations back last January 2011 through June of 2011, in developing the budget for the police, we knew that overall, we couldn't afford a 5% increase in total costs. We knew that there was a contract increase of 5%, so we looked at areas that could be reduced to ensure that it wasn't a 5% increase to their total budget, it was only 3%. And so, 1 through 3 is the items that were at the point, at that time, recommended by the chief and the city manager and adopted, the council adopted, so.
So, just again, I would just want to highlight, like the library, these are reductions that have already been.
Correct. That are, that have been, that have been done as part of the 11, 12 budget in order to balance. So you've made reductions in these three areas, the reverse police contract, the crime prevention, and then the two police cadets.
That's a senior deputy in crime prevention.
Correct.
So that's a sworn position that's been eliminated.
Yes, and, and I think the total, if I, if I remember correctly, over the past five years, we had. Over the past five years, on top of the 85, including that 85, and maybe you can go back, there was a total of seven positions in police.
Right.
When you, when you look at the way that they do the calculations as far as positions and the 24/7 aspect.
Okay, very good.
Any other comments?
I'd move the staff recommendations, 1 through 4, for our fiscal year.
Oh, I am. I have some public speaker cards.
All right.
And they've been waiting a very long time, so. Mr. Hicks, you are up. It's nice to see you, thank you for being patient.
My name's Bill Hicks, I live in Newbury Park, I've lived there for over 30 years. I came to speak with you regarding the budget, and I recommend that you accept staff's recommendations for any cuts through attrition or any other methods as necessary. These are the hard decisions that have to be made sometimes, but they have to be made. When it comes to the collective bargaining issues, may I suggest that furloughs, if cuts are not adequate to meet the short gap in our budget, that furloughs be strongly considered. I worked for 43 years for the Los Angeles Unified School District. I was laid off once, and I was furloughed twice. Neither is a fun thing to go through, but the more humane method is through a furlough, because you still have a job. May I also suggest that you reconsider accepting grants and subsidies from both the state and the federal government, so that we don't become accustomed to money from undependable That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. The next speaker is Sharon Moret.
Sharon Moret, Newbury Park. We need fiscal responsibility to be brought to our council to protect our city from fiscal crises and to have reserves on hand. A few years ago, when the recession loomed, we were told that unlike the federal, state, and other city governments, Thousand Oaks was in excellent financial shape, and a 3% raise was given. After a matter of a few weeks, there was a 180-degree turnaround. The citizens were told that street sweeping would be on our dime, and city hours were cut. There were furloughs, and at least the last week of the year, most offices in the city hall were closed. Glancy, in his mayoral address, said that we were in hard times. If one government agency is affected, it becomes a snowball effect. In our city, revenue has been impacted by businesses closing down or reducing staff. Car sales are flat compared to what sales are when we are not in a recession. Many of our residents are underemployed or unemployed. We need to be proactive. We also knew ahead of time that the state, which is near bankruptcy, might tap funds that otherwise we would be receiving. This was a given. When it came to hiring a new city attorney, we were told that the old norm of providing salary and benefits was done by looking and seeing what other city governments were offering. The new norm is to drop all salaries of new employees for benefits as well, by 15% to 20%. This needs to be instituted. New hirees do have a tremendous benefit, and that is, they can work close to home. Else, they would be spending thousands of dollars in gasoline and other transportation costs. So they do have a very big benefit. We need council members to work independently, to do their best to keep our city in good financial shape and represent Thousand Oaks citizens. The unions are tied with Occupy Wall Street. Unions need to realize that we are in hard times when it comes to negotiations. The city needs to provide a good climate for businesses to thrive and grow. Hopefully, the hard times will subside.
Thank you, Ms. Moret. The last speaker is Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, Director Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor, just want to make a point of order that all agencies, and in particular, your rules, disallow personal attacks to any citizen that speaks by name. And this is the second time that you have done it, especially from people that feed at the public trough. It's uncalled for. If your TV can show my wonderful, beautiful overhead, it's old, but I didn't have my computer thing, I'm looking for donation for Office 2010. 30, 30, 30 is my plan. 30% reduction of amounts over $100,000 in salary, 30% cut in, in staff, I mean, you have really not cut any staff, it's just a joke, and 30% reduction in the gold-plated benefits. I do want to thank staff, Mr. Adams, for a good presentation. I like a lot of the graphs, we could just use a few more historical graphs. One of the bright spots that is not mentioned, which is up for grabs, is $2.1 million in Dos Vientos developer funds, unencumbered, still available, but the city manager will decide where it goes, it won't be done in a public forum, it seems like. The citizens were lied to, I mean, I use the word without, with caution, about the theaters, they could never survive. I mean, all the theaters in the country have a subsidy, it's a wild goose chase or pipe dream that, that some council members are trying to spin. Those people who were on the side of building the theaters and their proteges, even the third-generation people who have come on board, who, who supported the same people, should, I mean, there's a beautiful word in, in English, it's sorry. Should apologize to the community and bring this community together, and maybe we can reduce the deficits. For the record, Alex Theater, I believe, went out of business too, from where the director has come. Some of the things that I'm opposed to is, you need to bring back the crime night that used to be held. In fact, I talked to the chief of police some time ago, and he said it was temporary, but it's gone. It's horrible. I, in fact, think that $10,000 for employee picnic is a good source of spending the money for the morale. Regarding, we don't really need a business development rep, but you should really, it doesn't cost much money, you should have two meetings, one with the leasing agents in the city, informal pastries cake, and talk with them to find out how leasing can be done, and also with the real estate agents to find out about, about that. The closure on Friday is just uncalled for, it's against a mission statement, and it doesn't save money. Thank you.
Thank you, Kidway, Mr. Kidway. Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to move the staff recommendations, item 1 through 4, for the fiscal year 2011, 2012 mid-year budget.
Vote please. The motion carries for zero.
Item 10B is the Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board Appointments, and Scott Mitnick will present the report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the recommendation in front of you has to do with the Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency Oversight Board. We've been in front of you before, we heard during the budget discussion, reference made to the redevelopment agencies in California being dissolved. Part of that process is to form a oversight board that has seven members, and they'll deal with the, the winding down of the redevelopment agency's operations, dealing with outstanding issues. So, seven members so far, several of the other members have already been appointed. One of the members that's appointed comes from the County Board of Supervisors, and that appointment has been made, that's the Assistant County Executive Officer, Paul Dursley. He's the county budget officer or chief financial officer. One of the appointments is to come from the mayor, another to come from largest special district, in our case, the fire district, and the Board of Supervisors made that appointment, Abby Burns, who's an assistant director with the fire district. She also is a Thousand Oaks resident. There was one appointment coming from the County Superintendent of Education, that appointment's been made, that's our, our Kinnell Valley Unified School District Superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Barsted, that appointment's been made. There's another one from the Chancellor of the California Community Colleges, and one of the Moore Park College Vice Presidents, the one in charge of business, Iris Ingram, she's been appointed. I believe she's a resident of Camarillo. Another one comes from a public member from the County Board of Supervisors. That appointment was supposed to take place today, that's been delayed to either next week, April 17, or the following week, April 24. We don't know who that is. The seventh member would then be representative of the former redevelopment agency employees. So we've shared information with you with the other nine cities have done, they've done that, they're kind of all over the map. So the recommendation here, in consultation with the mayor, her preference is for the general appointment to be herself, the mayor, and that's in line with what four other cities in our county have done, and what a lot of cities throughout the state is, is it the majority? We don't know that. Okay, so that's the recommendation there. And for the former, the person to represent the former redevelopment agency employees, the recommendation is for it to be the Assistant City Manager, Mark Watkins. The other cities are all over the map with respect to what we, what is done there. And we decided to sort of follow the lead from the county, since they did assign an Assistant County CEO to this board. And with that, the mayor is seeking your concurrence, and staff is available if you have questions. Thank you.
I'm prepared to put a motion on the table.
Please do.
I'd move the recommendation to appoint Mayor Irwin as the city general appointment and Assistant City Manager, Mark Watkins, for the Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency Representative.
Vote please. Motion carries for zero.
Item 11, City Council Successor Agency to Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency Reports, there are none. Item 12, Council Issues and Recommendations, follow-up reports on meetings and conferences attended by council members. The first is the National League of Cities Conference, and Dr. Glancy, would you like to do that report?
Sure, Madam Mayor, it'd be my pleasure to. NLC met in Washington in March. It was a very well-attended meeting. We, the primary purpose is for our lobbying team to get there and really hit the senators who have any say-so over the Tiger Grants. We had, I thought, four very, very positive meetings with legislators' offices and also DOT, and they, they gave us some good input, and all we can hope is that it's going to really help us with the. help us with the tiger grants as they come up. But we certainly put our best foot forward, and we'll see if it pays off. The conference itself was the typical good conference. People from the Hill came down and spoke, people from local media. It is the opportunity for the policy committees to have their first annual meeting of the year. So as such, Transportation, Information, Infrastructure Services met, of which I'm a member, and also Information Technology met. The work plan for the year was laid out, and it's well worth our efforts to be part of it. So I recommend we... File.
Vote, please.
Receive and file.
Motion carries for zero.
Item 12A2 is the Public Safety Policy Committee meeting. I attended that. Our retired council member, Dennis Gillette, has been involved in leadership positions on that committee for a very long time. I'm appointed temporarily, and the report includes most of the information, but there were some interesting discussions, and, for instance, whether code enforcement officers should have the powers of arrest and felony arrest. So the committee opposed that one. You can see everything else that the committee considered at this report also. And I would recommend to receive report. Vote, please.
Motion carries for zero.
City manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up, we heard from the folks who were talking about the corporate citizenship issue, so we will, at your direction, conduct the research and bring back options for council as soon as we're able. No other follow-up. The next council meeting will be on April 24, and at this point in time, we're looking at two public hearings. One dealing with the general plan and specific plan amendments to the zoning for the Westside properties. That's already gone to the planning commission, and that was approved. The other public hearing that we're working on at this time is dealing with a wireless communications facility, or cell tower, in Dos Vientos at 402 Coli del Prado. I think it's, that's who the appeal is coming from, excuse me, this is one of the proposed cell sites out in, at a park site out in Dos Vientos. So that'll come back to you. We're also coming back with some department reports of interest, the vehicle license impound fee, that was the issue raised by the grand jury. We're coming back to council with some options for that, and a variety of other items, including the regional transit status update report. Also, the Grande Vista Drive zone change to deal with the assisted living project that's been in front of you before, that's coming back. Madam Mayor, one other thing, on April 25, Wednesday, the day after that council meeting, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m., and complying with council direction, to engage the police department more with some of the issues dealing with the schools. At Civic Arts Plaza, in this very sheer forum, we're going to be holding a community forum for three hours to help parents and students deal with issues such as heroin use and pills and that type of thing. We strongly encourage parents to attend. Our police chief, Randy Pentis, will be there. So there's information on the city website, I'm sure it's on the school district's website as well. So, council, that's an example of how we're taking that issue very seriously. That's it, by way of city manager follow-up. Thank you.
Item 14 is closed session, and can I have the city attorney please announce?
Yes, we'll be meeting in closed session, conference with labor negotiators. City-designated representatives are the assistant city manager, Mark Watkins, finance director, John Adams, human resources director, Gary Rogers, public works director, Jay Spurgeon, and we will be meeting pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. It is unlikely that I will have anything to report on this closed session matter after that meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. And finally, our adjournments. We have four this evening. Our first adjournment tonight is in the memory of Connie Smith, a former city employee for 19 years. Connie began working with the city in 1971, and retired from the Public Works Building and Safety Division in 1990. Connie's son, Pat Smith, is also a city employee, currently serving in the position of Street Division Supervisor. For the past 20 years, Connie lived with her husband in the mountains of Northern California, and then the foothills of Maglia, California. Connie passed away on March 6, following her battle with cancer. I would like to send our deepest sympathies to the Smith family. Connie will be dearly missed by her family and friends. Our second adjournment is Spiros Sipsas, a former community development technician who retired in December 2010, passed away March 22, following a serious illness. During his 10 years of service with the city, Spiros was responsible for handling homeowner and small-business permits, as well as phone encounter inquiries. He was well-liked for his friendly personality, and he was known for his pleasant greeting and kind word to everyone. On behalf of the City of Thousand Oaks City Council, I would like to express our deepest sympathies for the family of Spiros Sipsas. Our third adjournment is in honor of Dr. Melvin Hayashi, longtime Thousand Oaks orthopedic surgeon who passed away on March 11. Born in Honolulu, he moved to California when he was in high school. His love of sports helped him excel as he worked his way to becoming an orthopedic surgeon specializing in sports medicine. Dr. Hayashi served in the U.S. Air Force, leaving the service as a lieutenant colonel in 1972. In 1973, he began his practice in Thousand Oaks. He dedicated his time selflessly to players and coaches with Cal Lutheran University, Moorpark College, and our high schools. His talent was well-known, also serving as team physician for the USA soccer and water polo teams at the U.S. Olympics in 1984 and 1988. During his distinguished career, Dr. Hayashi was known for his selfless dedication to helping others. On behalf of our Thousand Oaks City Council and the residents of our city, I would like to express our sincere condolences to the Hayashi family, and especially to Brooke Fage, his daughter and a city employee in our community development department. Our community has lost a gifted surgeon and a unique individual. And our final adjournment this evening is in memory of Joe Brown, another of our generous community supporters. Joe, born and raised in downtown Los Angeles, attended Loyola Marymount University, graduating with a degree in engineering. In 1950, Joe and his family settled in the Canejo Valley, where he went to work for the Janz Corporation. In 1969, he purchased the Janz Realty Company, which eventually became Brown Realtors. Joe established Merry Health of the Sick Convalescent Home in Newbury Park, the Canejo Association of Realtors, and the Ventura County Community Foundation in Camarillo, to name just a few of his accomplishments. He assisted in the development of more than 10,000 acres in the Canejo Valley that were owned by the Janz family. He had a hand in convincing developers to locate the Oaks Mall in Thousand Oaks, and he was involved in the sale of 2,000 acres to MGM Studios in the late 1970s. Joe was a dynamic force in our community, and he will be deeply missed by his family, friends, and colleagues. On behalf of the city council, we send our heartfelt condolences to the Brown family. And we will be adjourning our meeting to our regular meeting on April 24.